Good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board, and I hereby call this meeting to order. Thank you to everyone who has joined us in person. It's nice to see so many people here this morning. At this time, I will, I, did I say morning? Oh, my gosh. Did I say morning? Okay. For the record, I've been here since 1:00, so, and we're just beginning, so I'm so sorry. Let me start over. It's nice to see everyone here this mo-, this evening. Welcome. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presenting the School Board Chamber are Chair Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Dr. Green, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And attending via Zoom is Ms. Franklin. And Ms. Franklin, for the record, can you please state the reason why you're Zooming and your location?
I'm Zooming because I'm not feeling well, and I'm in the conference room in Room 113.
Thank you.
Yes, she is in this building, right on the hall. Okay. At this time, would you please join me in observing a moment of silence? Tonight, I would like to welcome the Brandon Middle School Chorus and Michelle B. Worst, Chorus Director. After the Pledge of Allegiance, they will be singing the National Anthem. Welcome, Chargers. And at this time, please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. I'm just checking with Ms. Franklin to make sure she has the sheet for student awards and recognitions. You guys all prepared for your, okay, then we can skip her.
Okay. Excited to do our first recognition this evening, and that is for the VBCPS Librarian of the Year and the Virginia Association of School Librarians Librarian of the Year. Please welcome Stephanie Baker. Mrs. Stephanie Baker was named the 2024 School Librarian of the Year by the Virginia Association of School Librarians because of the outstanding way she demonstrates the five roles of a library media specialist: a teacher, instructional partner, leader, information specialist, and program administrator. In these roles, she empowers learners to become critical thinkers, enthusiastic readers, and ethical users of information through engaging and rigorous lessons and activities. She builds relationships with students outside of the Great Neck Middle School Library by sponsoring clubs such as the Newspaper Club, Readers Advisory, Student Book Clubs, and the Public Libraries Battle of the Books Team. As a nationally board-certified teacher, Mrs. Baker serves as a candidate support provider for her peers seeking national board certification. She has presented at multiple state conferences and has presented at the D-Tall Summer Professional Development Series. She conducts professional development at her school and with her peers. She is a leader in her school by serving on the Instructional Leadership Team and the Avid Literacy Committee. And she's a leader among her library peers by serving as the Vice President of the Virginia Beach Library Association. As an information specialist, Mrs. Baker embraces and models emerging technologies. She was an active member of the Division's Artificial Intelligence Impact Team. Mrs. Baker's leadership and dedication to the intellectual and personal development of students make her the ideal candidate for the statewide Librarian of the Year. Congratulations, Ms. Baker. We are proud of you.
Our next recognition is for the statewide Art Teacher of the Year. Please welcome Meredith Snyder of Princess Anne Elementary School. Mrs. Snyder's dedication to art education, leadership, and artistic contributions has significantly impacted students, educators, and the broader community. Her teaching career spans kindergarten through 12th grade, including AP Art Instruction and Department Leadership. She is also a national board-certified teacher showcasing her commitment to excellence. She has developed curricula, served as a National Art Honor Society sponsor, and led workshops for new teachers. During the pandemic, she assembled and delivered art supplies to students, including those in Title I schools, ensuring continued access to art education. An accomplished artist, Mrs. Snyder has completed over 200 commissioned works and created murals for schools and communities. Her art has been featured in exhibitions, including the Virginia Museum of Contemporary Art and other galleries. Mrs. Snyder has served as a mentor and leader for art educators locally, statewide, and nationally. She has presented at conferences for organizations such as the National Art Education Association and the National Association for Gifted Children. Mrs. Snyder's dedication to teaching, artistic excellence, and leadership make her a highly deserving candidate for the Virginia Elementary Art Educator Award. Her contributions inspire students, colleagues, and the broader art community. Congratulations, Mrs. Snyder. We are very proud of you.
Our next three recognitions are for Excellence in Health and Physical Education. These awards are given by the Virginia Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, also known as AFORD. Please welcome Michelle Schafstah, Lori Morris Platt, and Leigh Dunn. Mrs. Schafstah of Princess Anne Middle School was awarded Middle School Teacher of the Year from the Association. She is an incredible teacher who prioritizes student engagement and motivates her middle school students to set and surpass personal goals both inside and outside of the classroom. She is a great example of the importance of physical, personal, physical fitness and having a growth mindset. Always looking for new and innovative ideas, Michelle has become a teacher leader and one whom her colleagues look up to. Mrs. Morris Platt of Tallwood High School was awarded Secondary Teacher of the Year from the Association. She is a veteran health and physical education teacher who has mentored countless students and staff throughout her career. From the classroom to the athletic training fields, the relationships that she has cultivated with students is unparalleled. Her investment in the success of our health and physical education program in VBCPS is greatly appreciated. Mrs. Dunn, who is instructional specialist in the Department of Teaching and Learning, was awarded Supervisor of the Year from the Association. She has worked hard to create curriculum and programs for health and physical education that have been recognized across the state as the gold standard. Always prepared to support teachers and students, she is tireless in her efforts to advocate to ensure health and physical education remain a priority in VBCPS. The word "can't" does not exist in Mrs. Dunn's vocabulary. She comes to work each and every day prepared to make a difference for all students and staff. Congratulations, educators. We are so proud of you.
There's two more. One more.
Our next recognition is for Virginia Department of Education Purple Star Schools. The VDOE and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on the Educational Opportunity for Military Children are recognizing 24 VBCPS Purple Star Schools for demonstrating their commitment to meeting the needs of military-connected students and their families. Of these 24 schools, 18 were second-time recipients, and 11 earned the distinction for the third time. Our first group of Purple Star Schools are Bayside High School, Brandon Middle School, College Park Elementary School, Corporate Landing Elementary School, Corporate Landing Middle School, First Colonial High School, Floyd E. Kellum High School, Great Neck Middle School. Congratulations, schools. We are proud of you. There's more. Our second group of Purple Star Schools are Hermitage Elementary School, Kempsville High School, Kingston Elementary School, Lanstown Middle School, Linkhorn Park Elementary School, Malibu Elementary School, Newcastle Elementary School, North Landing Elementary School. Congratulations, schools. We are proud of you. And our third group of Purple Star Schools are Princess Anne Elementary School, Princess Anne High School, Salem Elementary School, Shelton Park Elementary School, Virginia Beach Middle School, W.T. Cook Elementary School, Windsor Woods Elementary School, Woodstock Elementary School. Congratulations, schools. We are proud of you. This concludes the School Board recognitions for this evening.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications of the agenda as presented? Dr. Green?
Chairwoman Melnick, I had sent an email to my colleagues requesting that we just reorder the items in, under Action in Section 18, moving the Legislative Agenda before we move into the Policies.
Okay, so your, your email said you wanted to switch in Action C?
Yes.
And B?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any discussion on that? All right, Mr. Callen?
If you're a fan of Star Trek, there's an old expression that accompanies the story, and it has to do with going where no man has ever gone before. Well, that's where I'm going tonight. I've never done this before, so I may violate all sorts of Robert Rules of Orders in my attempt to make a point.
I see Mrs. Manning has the book here, so we'll.
Keep your seatbelts fastened, ladies and gentlemen. Who knows where this may lead?
Okay.
My suggestion, and maybe it's a motion,
Okay.
is to move, what Alveda was just talking about, Legislative Agenda, not higher up in the Action Agenda, but back to Information. And my reasoning behind that is there are so many issues associated with the Legislative Agenda that I feel we haven't fully vetted and talked about and understood, whether it's the assessment issues or others that are listed. And I just think, in order to do justice to this particular topic and the significance that it represents, that we back the train up and get back into Information and more deeply explore this matter.
Okay, so here's, okay. So there were some glitches with the Legislative Committee this year, in fairness. We were not given the information in a timely fashion. I understand what you're saying. We have a Legislative Breakfast on Friday, and our legislators are leaving at the beginning of January. We have a lobbyist who's ready to share our Legislative Agenda, and we're going to be sending him to Richmond without it, and we basically will have nothing to share with our legislators on Friday at the breakfast. But would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, second? Second by Ms. Manning. All right, discussion. Okay, no discussion then. Just going to wait, make sure the clerk has your motion.
Point of clarification, Madam Chair. We are only voting on moving this to Information, correct? That's it? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So is it possible that we could move it to Information and then vote on it later? Later tonight?
Are you making a substitute motion?
That's what I'd like to do, because I do feel that we would, it would be incumbent upon us to have our Legislative Agenda ready to go, at least by Friday, when we have our Legislative Breakfast, so we can talk to the legislators at that time. So I don't have a problem with moving the Legislative Agenda to Information, so we can ask a lot of questions about it, although we can still ask questions about it even if it's still under Action. But I just feel like, well, I'm not going to make a motion. I just feel like we should vote against this. We can ask many questions we want during the Action.
Okay, so you have the substitu-, I mean, you have the motion on the floor? Okay. All right, so this is the motion to move Legislative Agenda from Action to Information. No further discussion? Okay, Voting Board is open.
Ms. Franklin, how do you vote?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, we have six ayes and five nays, so that motion did pass. So that would be Information Item Number E.
Okay, so now that's on Information. So, Dr. Robertson, what do we do now? We have nothing for our breakfast, and we have nothing to send to Richmond.
That's correct.
You could, at the end of Information, decide that you want to add an Action Item if you think you've resolved your issues. Sorry, then take it up then, if you think you could do, if you're ready to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you. So back to Dr. Green's motion. You make a motion? Okay, everybody's okay with that? We still need, we still moved it. I still need approval to move it.
Right, well, I will withdraw it.
Oh, now you don't have to do it at all, because we've moved it, period. It's on Information. Okay, so we'll withdraw all of that. All right. Okay.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
In Action 18D, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but the way that's listed is that, it sounds like that that is a two-part discussion. First, to waive the bylaws, and then to discuss the issue of Book Content Committee, is that correct? So when we get to that item?
So I was, I don't know why it's listed as Book Content Committee. I thought, the only, the only vote I knew we were talking about was the timeline. That was it, so.
It was originally on the Agenda as Book Content, and the request to add the item that would amend the policy was after the Agenda was published. So we left the title and expanded on to this. So it's a proposed amendment to Policy 665, Section D. But because this is the first time you're seeing it pursuant to your Bylaw 132, normally you would present one meeting and vote in a subsequent meeting. There is a procedure by which you can get it up for the same meeting and a vote, the first time presented and a vote. So that's why it's a two-part motion, but we left, because the title had already been published in the Agenda, we thought it'd be more confusing to change the title on there, but it's an amendment to Policy 665D, which is the Book Content Committee.
I just wanted to understand the procedure we're going to use here. So when we get to Item 18D, we're going to do the first motion and then move on to the second motion.
I was unaware of it being a two-part, two-part question. When we left at the last meeting, it was, it, the only question was the timeline for, it was only a timeline question, and then Dr. Robertson said that the, that Dr. Schubridge would be meeting with LMSs and that they would get back to us, and that was, that was how we left that two weeks ago, so.
And Ms. Franklin had proposed an amendment to Policy 665D, and she wanted to change the language on it. It doesn't, it is not necessarily dealing with the timeline. It is amending the process and the requirements for this. So it doesn't end up becoming two-part, because to, you have to, she's got to notice ahead of time. So you did see the policy ahead of time, but to be able to affirmatively pass it under Bylaw 132, you have to have seven members. Her proposal is that you vote to suspend the seven-member requirement, only make it a majority requirement to pass it tonight. So that's the first thing you're voting on. If that doesn't pass, it does meet the requirements for you to vote on it, but because it's the first time up and seeing, and you're voting on it, you will require at least seven members to pass tonight. It's a little confusing, so.
Yeah, it's very confusing, so at that point, I'll turn to you for that, because I was unaware of that piece, so. All right, Ms. Weems?
Yes, I mean, we did talk about the timeline, but unfortunately, that was not mentioned in anything that was in our packet. What, what our colleague, Ms. Franklin, wanted to do was actually change and amend the policy, which requires us to put aside our bylaws. And so that does need, any way you look at it, it's got to have seven votes. So my question is, where should that go in our agenda? Ms. Lynetti?
You can either do it now, or you could do it later on in Action, but here's what happens. Because she gave you those ahead of time, it still can go on tonight and vote. The question is, her request to suspend the Bylaw will affect the amount of votes you need to vote on this one. So if, if you were to suspend the Bylaw, she's asking you to suspend the Bylaw, and it's actually, and it's written wrong in the Agenda cover sheet, we've corrected that, is under Bylaw 130B. She's asking you to suspend a portion of Bylaw 132C3, which requires seven people. She's asking for it simply to be a majority vote. If you don't pass that part, and it's still on the Agenda for Action, but it will require, if you vote on it, it requires seven persons, people to pass tonight, because you have 11 members present. So either way, will she opt on Action? The question is, how many votes do you need to get it to pass? It normally would be seven. She's asking you to suspend a portion of seven, let it simply be a majority tonight.
But to suspend the Bylaws, you have to have seven votes. So whether she's suspending the seven to the six, or the, just suspending the seven, whatever, she's asking to do something that requires seven people to vote in affirmative.
And that was how it was drafted in the Agenda, if she's pulling that back and just asking.
I don't know how, but I don't know how the public follows this. I'm actually a little embarrassed.
It is. It is crazy politics, is what it is, the last meeting, because the board is changing. It's crazy, unfortunate politic.
So, Ms. Manning, is that you that keeps hitting, you hit yours? Okay, yes, go ahead.
So I just want to clarify something. Our Bylaw 1-32C3, and I know this quite well, because we had many conversations on it when it was amended, it permits the School Board to adopt, amend, or repeal a policy at the same meeting when first presented, if there is an affirmative vote of seven of the School Board members, if there are 11 members present. So that is the Bylaw that addresses this issue, C3, 1-32C3. So I'm confused why we're even addressing 1-30 at all, because Bylaw 1-32 is what governs voting on a policy when it's presented at that meeting.
And in that, what Ms. Franklin was asking is the requirement under 132B3, when you're looking at it, is to have the seven members.
132B doesn't have a 3.
Oh, I'm sorry. 132C3 has the requirement that seven members vote on it, because it's unusual, the fact that you bring it in for the first time, Ms. Franklin, too now, but for, it would normally require a seven-member vote. She's asking you to suspend that. So that's what the 130, Bylaw 132 processes, suspend the requirement for seven votes. Instead, make it simply a majority vote.
But our bylaws don't permit that. Where does that, where do our bylaws permit that?
130 would allow you to suspend a portion of a Bylaw.
Where? Where does it say that?
Should it be in Section 18?
Okay.
Sorry, messed up my papers here.
Okay, so you can suspend a Bylaw. So what Bylaw are we suspending?
132C3, the requirement for seven votes.
But, so you need seven votes to do it? So either way, I mean, whatever, I mean, if we want to make it more complicated than it really should be, but either way, you need seven votes, so. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Franklin?
And I'm sorry, I tried not to come on the dais because I'm not feeling well, but I can't hardly hear because of the music in the, in the Room 113. So I wanted to make sure that I was here for this, since this discussion is coming up now. And first of all, this was not a political move. This was a situation where I was, where I had the ability to make some adjustments for the library media specialists so that they could not be in a position where they felt like they were unable to.
Point of order, Madam Chair. We're not talking about the topic right now. We're talking about the adoption of the Agenda, so now it's not the proper time to talk about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, like I said, I could hardly hear, so I couldn't, I didn't understand what was.
Okay, so, um.
So, what, what was the, what was the question about the agenda then? I'm so sorry, I couldn't, I, I couldn't hear what the, what was being said at the time. What was the question?
We don't have any questions. We've resolved it, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so, I'm not sure that we did, but, um, your question was answered? Okay, and so, yes, go ahead, please, Dr. Green.
Could you clarify what we are going to be changing on the agenda? I am not clear and not comfortable voting until I know what I am voting on.
Well, I'm, I'm yielding to the, the attorney, 'cause.
I think the question was, would it be more appropriate, and this is my summarization, Ms. Culpeper's question, is that, would you take up the, of the two-part motion? Would you take up the piece as to whether you will be suspending that portion of the bylaw now, or you take it up during action? When drafted, we decided it makes more sense to put it together on action. It will still, it won't change whether you can take up the, the actual policy amendment. That still will stay on action. The question is, um, how many votes on doing that? So, you could, at this point, move the adoption of the agenda to try to solve, to know what it's going to be later on, but it's not gonna change the fact that the amendment for policy six sixty-five D will be up later on in action.
Well, I'm glad you guys understand that. I'm still confused, and so, do you want to, um, do you want to do it now or later? Okay, we'll do it later, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm, I still don't. So, now, I guess we're back to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Green?
I am still not clear, Ms. Lynetti, um, on what we will be voting on to amend in the agenda.
Right now, you're still on your adoption of the agenda, so all these issues here will come up under action. Um, and I can help you when you get to that section. It might, one, you, my suggestion would be you finish your adoption, the agenda piece, 'cause you don't need to deal with that right now.
Alright, so what are we asking to adopt?
Which would be what, what you and Mr. Callen had changed, which is the legislative, that's what's changing.
Which, Dr. Green's is void now, so it's just Mr. Callen's. Information. Okay.
So, the legislative agenda is under information item E, so you will be adopting the agenda as presented and amended with the addition of the legislative agenda, information item E.
Okay, did everybody get that? Alright, any further discussion? The voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and three nays, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson?
Yes, uh, thank you. I've got, uh, one recognition tonight, and we are pleased to, uh, introduce you, many of you know, Tiffany Jacobs, formerly a grants manager of Department of Budget and Finance, to now be the Director of Budget and Finance. And Tiffany, congratulations. And I believe you brought a guest or guests. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Is that it for this evening?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, now, moving on to the approval of the minutes. I call for a motion to approve the November twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four minutes as presented. Motion made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from November twenty-sixth.
Thank you. The school board will now hear public comments, beginning with the public hearing of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six school operating budget and fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six through thirty, thirty-one capital improvement program. And pub, then, comments on matters relevant to pre-K through twelve, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the school board and the school division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the school board clerk prior to noon today. Um, as always, um, respecting kindness, I appreciate it so much. And Madam Clerk, would you please announce our first public's comment speaker?
Our first speaker for the, uh, public hearing on the budget is Dan Chang.
Welcome, Mr. Chang.
Is this on? Oh, yeah. Well, Ms. Melnick, with respect and kindness, I cannot overemphasize that the funding for VB CPS is taxpayer-provided funds, both the operating budget and the CIP. School board has a responsibility to the taxpayers to provide an education to the children of Virginia Beach. This goes with the requirement to accomplish this with fiscal responsibility. This school board and VB CPS leadership have not demonstrated fiscal responsibility. Both budgets should remain within estimated funding sources. They should not rely on tax increases. Both budgets should be requirements-based, educational requirements, not diversity, equity, and inclusion, social, emotional learning, and social engineering requirements. An example of this is a sole-source contract that I believe has been expired to Panorama Education for SCL. The development of the operating budget should take into account the department's in-line item expenditure rates and review variances for budget adjustments. This is a common practice. The CIB, CIP budget should be based on actual estimates and not fi- fiscal estimates, which aren't based on reality. With the new administration coming into office, twenty January, twenty-twenty-five, and changes in the Department of Education regarding feder- federal funding, there should be a review of programmed, current programs for compliance with the U.S. Constitution. Non-compliance could result in losing federal funding. Lastly, the past and current operating budgets and CIP do not follow that ultimate responsibility of the school board and VB CPS leadership to students, to citizens, and taxpayers. Your priorities are off. When the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six operating budget and CIP are available for taxpayer review, I look forward to seeing a reprioritization back to education. On another note, I know that there is an effort afoot on salaries. I hope that when you take a look at the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six operating budget, you take into consideration the school bus drivers, the food service providers, the custodians, to get an adequate adjustment to their salaries. Thank you and have a nice Christmas. I guess I could say Merry Christmas, thank you.
And that was our only speaker for the, uh, public hearing on the budget. Our next group of speakers will be Melinda Rogers, Angie Holinsky, and Susan Saltziak.
Good evening. This evening, I've chosen to speak on the cell phone policy from the perspective of a parent. I've reviewed the Governor's executive order regarding cellphone-free learning environments in Virginia schools. I understand the Governor's intention to reduce distractions in students' learning environments and agree that cellphone usage is a distraction, particularly for our secondary students during instructional time. However, I did not find specific language in the executive order addressing how school boards are expected to enforce this policy. I believe this is likely because the Governor has left the implementation of this policy to the discretion of each school division, allowing for flexibility to tailor the approach to the unique needs of each community and district in Virginia. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has distinguished itself by offering innovative learning opportunities that are unique to Virginia Beach and not available in other districts across the Commonwealth. One such program is the concept of One Lunch. This innovative program allows students to avoid overcrowded cafeterias during lunch and instead choose from a wide range of spaces throughout the school building. One Lunch has become highly popular and successful addition to our schools, offering students the chance to read, study, socialize, see tutoring, or participate in clubs. During this time, many students use their cellphones to organize plans, study, read, or connect with peers in other areas of the school. As a parent, I acknowledge that cellphones and technology will play an increasingly integral role in my children's future in ways that were unmanageable when I was their age. I grew up in an era of limited technology where our high school computer room consisted of a few desktop computers where students took turns practicing DOS commands, and the idea of a mobile phone was a corded car phone that was only used for emergencies. Since then, technology has evolved exponentially and become embedded in every aspect of our lives. As a parent, it is my responsibility to help my children learn to navigate this technical, technological landscape responsibly and effectively. This is why I support the use of cellphones during One Lunch. When managed appropriately, students can learn to use their phones responsibly during their free time. I believe it is in, it is, I believe that all of us in this room understand the role of cellphones in our daily lives, and many of us likely have our phones with us right now, and some of us even texting during public comment. The question is not whether or not we can have our phones and students cannot, but whether we are setting the right example and teaching our children that there is an appropriate time and place for our cellphone usage. The goal of education to not, should not simply be to help students reach graduation, but to equip them with the tools they need to succeed in the world beyond school. By teaching students when it is acceptable to use their phones, such as during a lunch break, we are preparing them to navigate life after school and into adulthood. If we talk about preparing students for college and career readiness, we should also teach them responsibility of managing technology. In conclusion, supporting responsible use of cellphones during One Lunch not only aligns with the goals of preparing students for their future, but also helps them develop skills to balance technology use and personal responsibility. In closing, I'd also like to say for policy six six five, please see my email. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Holinsky, then Susan Saltziak, then Diane Muscovac. Angie Holinsky? Okay, Suzanne Saltziak?
Good evening. I wanted to come tonight to thank those of you on the board who will be stepping down tonight. I began coming to the board six or seven years ago to advocate for recess for my son. During that time, I have had conversations with many and gotten to know so many of you. I am really grateful for all of your service and time. It's been a dramatic couple of years here on the board. Ms. Anderson, thank you for your dedication to our littlest learners and ensuring that all of our kindergartners have access to full-day kindergarten. Thank you for listening to concerns and your energetic dedication throughout all the years. Ms. Riggs, thank you for being someone that I could call when educators had a concern and were concerned about coming forward. I remember how you acted immediately to address these situations while preserving the privacy of educators coming forward and understanding those dynamics. Ms. Franklin, we haven't always agreed on what is the right way to do things, but you have always wanted to find the right and best way to vote. And the bravery it takes to not follow party lines and to vote with what you believe is right does not go unnoticed. And Ms. Owens, who's become one of my friends, dear friends, I appreciate your service here so very much. It hasn't been easy, ever, and I know how much you struggle sometimes with thinking through unintended consequences and find, trying to find them in every vote. Um, you have a lot to be proud of during your tenure on this board, and I'm so glad we had that conversation so many summers ago about you running. I'm so grateful and proud to have supported you then, and while there are probably many times you regretted that decision, I never, ever have. And, of course, I couldn't leave it at that, uh, with so much on the agenda. First, I ask you to reconsider any plans to remove the current allowance for high school students to use their cellphones during lunch. It is important to recognize cellphones are a vital tool for communication, particularly in today's fast-paced world. Many parents rely on their children being able to access their phones during the school day to check in, coordinate after-school plans, or address urgent matters. Removing this allowance would disrupt the essential line of communication, leaving parents unable to reach their children when needed. Just today, I received a text from my son at lunch letting me know baseball practice was canceled for tonight, which actually allowed me to have lunch today so that I could get here for this. It's also important to note that, uh, lunchtime for them is a break from academic activities, not instructional time. The current policy does not interfere with learning or focus. Students are already expected to follow guidelines for an appropriate phone use during this time, and many are using phones during lunch responsibly to catch up on personal matters, contact parents, or simply relax before returning to class. Furthermore, respecting this, maintaining this allowance reflects a respect for parental rights. Parents should have the ability to decide if their student has access to a phone without value judgments by the school board or administration. By allowing phones to keep, our students to keep their phones during lunch, we're empowering families to stay connected and informed and not removing this right during a time in a, or in a way that impacts learning. Um, and finally, I wanted to address the current policy that requires elementary librarians, librarians to read every book in the library. To date, this policy has already consumed over forty thousand dollars in school funding, resulting in removing just one book. Given that this policy would extend to fifty-five schools, considering the librarian's hourly rate of approximately thirty dollars, the estimated cost to review all the books in every elementary library could exceed a hundred thousand, an enormous financial burden.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Diane Muscovac, Paula Chang, and then Dan Chang.
So, last month, I highlighted four schools in Virginia Beach, Green Run High School, Parkway Elementary, Larkspur Middle School, and Bayside High School, where students are not disciplined for cursing at teachers. This raises critical questions. What lessons are we teaching young students during their informative years as they prepare to navigate adulthood? And how does this lack of accountability impact teachers' motivation to remain in their profession? It doesn't have to be this way. There is another way. We must not accept unacceptable behavior, as it can lead to harmful patterns in adulthood. Children crave structure and clear boundaries, and enforcing those boundaries shows them that someone cares about their future. When students feel a sense of belonging and begin to develop a moral compass, their potential becomes limitless. The National School Chaplain's Association reports that twenty-three states have either passed or are in the process of filing chaplaincy bills, with others committed to doing so. Virginia is among the states showing interest in introducing chaplains into public schools. Chaplains play a pivotal role in force, in fostering a sense of belonging and community in schools. They serve as mediators during conflicts, helping students move toward reconciliation and understanding. Through counseling, group discussions, and moral guidance, chaplains create an atmosphere of respect, compassion, and empathy, qualities that reduce conflict and promote a peaceful school environment. In today's climate of heightened emotional strain, chaplains provide much-needed support for schools, nurturing not just academic success, but emotional well-being. Their ability to promote peace and stability can have a profound lasting impact, helping both students and educators flourish in a healthier, more supportive environment. No matter what the age, we all are children of the Most High God. Children need to know this. There are many verses in God's Word that teach us how to raise children. Here are a few. Children are a gift from God. They are precious and should be taught about His kingdom. Children should be disciplined, man, meaning a proper discipline brings a harvest of righteousness. So, this Christmas season, as you're celebrating Jesus Christ's birthday, stop and ask Him, how can you make a difference in a child's life? Not just your own child, but also the many children who need help with a moral compass. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Our next speaker is Paula Chang, Dan Chang, and then Mindy Freeman.
I'm gonna just quickly say is that, um, that discussion on the agenda, wow. But besides that, um, voters chose representatives for the next two years, and today, the Virginia Beach, uh, City Public Schools swore in the new school board, and I say congratulations to all those who are recently elected, and thank you to every single one of you who have served. In November, all levels of our republic, republic made clear that there's been a shift in our culture, back to more constitutional, traditional values. Those on the board and upcoming would be wise to pay attention to what we said via the ballot box, because this country is in the process of, to quote a coined phrase that's been around lately, we are in the process of unburdening ourselves with what has been, so we need to buckle up. Those who have been in power will fight to cling to the tried ways of control, namely racial, economic, gender, and religious division. But the citizens of this great republic rejected this coercive and manipulative propaganda. And every single generation, every race, every creed, every gender, and e- every economic class, um, rejected it, if you look at the, uh, numbers. Instead, we chose family, faith, freedom, and the thoughts of independence and the values of our U.S. Constitution. We rejected the godless socialist top-down government oppression and the lie honestly often. and the lie, honestly often and repeated here, that we are homophobic racists when we, uh, stand up for what we believe. We rejected the concept that schools are social science experiments, sexualizing and indoctrinating laboratories where children are co-raised with their parents. We rejected the idea that a title before your name and letters after it should intimidate parents into submissively believing that you know more about their child than they do themselves, and no. The prevalent letters in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools should be M-O-M-N-D-E-A-D. We rejected the concept that our money belongs to the government for excessive spending on an oversized and unneeded schools with citizens enslaved through taxation and government spending enriching handpicked companies. We rejected politicians rolling back from elected positions straight to a government job and a paycheck with that same institution, and I hope that never happens in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Most importantly to this board, citizens told you in our voting that we want children educated to critically think and prepare for the future. We want them safe. We want parents, families, and students respected, and we elected you for this, and we will be watching. Finally, tonight, um, and again, I appreciate all of you that have been here, but we say, uh, this board says goodbye to several members, and one in particular that has been on the front line of everything I believe this country stands for, and that's Vicki Manning. Vicki, it's been an honor fighting with you, and it's heartwarming to know that you go to a different aspect of the fight for which you're very well-suited and that you are leaving with such a strong board to continue on here. Uh, thank you very much, and Merry Christmas to you all.
Our next speaker is Dan Chang, then Mindy Freeman, then Lindsay Bohan.
Still here with respect and kindness. But I'd like to add, Ms. Melnick, that alternative points of view is not disrespectful. I want to thank the departing school board members, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Franklin for their service. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I know Shannon Kendrick is not here, but I also like to publicly thank her for the service on, her service on the school board to the citizens and children of Virginia Beach. She demonstrated that she has been able to accept the decision of the voters not to be elected in a gracious and dignified manner. Her dedication and sacrifice are very appreciated. I wish her all the best. Also, I'd like to echo what my wife said. I want to thank Vicki uh, for your dedication, uh, sorry, she got me going on this one, uh, in service to the citizens and students of Virginia Beach. I remember the day I met you. Uh, got me to really see what was going on. You had the strength and fortitude to shine the light of truth on the darkness that was occurring in the Virginia Beach School Division and this school board. Thank you, and we wish you all the best in your endeavors, and I know we will stay in contact. Merry Christmas.
Our next speaker is Mindy Freeman, then Lindsay Bohan, then Richard Pickens.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. There's a lot to comment on tonight, so we'll start with cell phones. High school students should be allowed the use of cell phones during lunch as it provides an opportunity to relax and connect with friends in their free time. Lunch breaks are meant for recharging, and allowing cellphone use lets students engage in activities they enjoy. It also gives them the opportunity to check in with parents, work, or after-school activities. It can also be used for organizing their schedules, quick tasks, and accessing helpful resources like study apps. Encouraging responsible phone use during lunch fosters a sense of trust and autonomy while balancing their academic responsibilities and prepares them for the future. On a personal note, I appreciate being able to receive text messages from a high school student when her after-school activities change. Last year, there were multiple instances when JV soccer practices or games were canceled, yet no notifications were sent from school. Thankfully, my daughter can message me so I could pick her up from the bus stop. Given that our stop is not close to our home, I prefer she not walk alone, especially as we strive to prioritize our young girls' safety. Wouldn't you agree, Mr. Callen? Next time you see us waiting at the bus stop on the top of your street, I encourage you to stop and engage with parents and students in District Six and learn firsthand what issues matter most to us. I believe you'll find students consider vaping in the bathrooms a far greater con, concern than cellphone use at lunch. During the last meeting, the public gained insightful information into the overwhelming and time-consuming process our library media specialists have faced while reviewing library materials for sexually explicit content, an effort that has yielded no findings. It was evident that some board members were also surprised by the extensive workload placed on our LMS. It is disappointing that decisions were made without a thorough understanding of how such policies or regulations would be implemented in practice. I urge future boards to execute, to exercise due diligence, retain their decision-making authority, and carefully consider the facts and implementations of policies that significantly impact our students and staff. And finally, I want to say thank you to the board members who will not be returning in January. I especially want to thank Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, Ms. Anderson for your tireless advocacy for the students, educators, and families in our community. You all have consistently supported policies that prioritize academic excellence, innovation, equity, and equality. And to Ms. Franklin, I appreciate your thoughtful decision-making, and your collaborative spirit has earned you the respect of many in our community. Thank you for your unwavering commitment, your vision, and your passion. Virginia Beach is stronger because of the work, and we are forever grateful, and happy Hanukkah.
Our next speaker is Lindsay Bohan, then Richard Pickens, then Dr. William Duke.
Good evening. On February twenty-seventh, the concept of a content committee was brought forth, discussed, and voted on and passed. The reason this was even an issue is because we have witnessed activists nationwide abusing their authority and pushing books in schools which contain sexually explicit or graphic content. You're wrong if you think this isn't happening here. Last October, at a high school's academy open house, the books Flamer, Heartstopper, and I Am Jazz were on proud display as I walked into the library. Last October, in LMS, at one of our high schools promoted banned books week and encouraged students to not only read the banned books for prizes, but to also become activists by following the steps she provided. And at a local middle school during a literacy night, copies of a book about an overweight lesbian superhero were donated, which were donated by a local organization, were given to all the kids in attendance. Frankly, the proposed amendment to the current policies don't go far enough with the secondary schools, as far as I'm concerned, but I don't expect anything to change. It's fine. Uh, we should be a united partnership in protecting children and teenagers against graphic and sexually explicit content, but instead, some of you prefer to call us Nazis. Anyway, uh, I recently submitted a FOIA request for emails, um, to library media specialists regarding the formation and the outcomes of the content committee. I also requested slides or handouts provided to the LMSs during their training. This came after seeing the stress my kid's elementary LMS was going through trying to review every book in her huge collection. This didn't seem right, and I was genuinely curious about how and why the content committee decided to place that unfair and completely unnecessary burden on elementary school librarians, assuming they were practicing the pre-existing policies. My FOIA request came back with one singular email, written by Dr. Robertson but sent by Dr. Shubridge on February twenty-ninth. I doubt this was the only communication. As far as I can tell, it was already an existing policy and expectation that elementary schools should have, should not have sexually explicit books in their libraries. Uh, this was confirmed by Dr. Robertson and others at that February twenty-seventh meeting, and in his statement to the local news, the elementary LMSs wouldn't have to shoulder a heavy burden. So I agree with the wording of Jennifer Franklin's proposed amendment in theory to lighten the load put on elementary LMSs, assuming the LMSs have complied with the current policies, but how do we really know? Finally, thank you for your years of service, Vicki Manning. We appreciate your courage and tenacity. And best of luck to the new school board members. And I guess just with my few, uh, seconds left, um, I appreciate all the comments that have been made about the cellphone policy. I agree that, uh, during non-instructional time, kids should have their phones. Um, for the examples that were given earlier with work, school cha, uh, schedule changes, et cetera, um, it's just really nice for them to have access, at least during that period, so I look forward to that discussion. And, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Pickens, then Dr. William Duke, then Melissa Luxon.
The scripture says blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, and this nation has certainly got a unique position in that regard because we were founded on Christian principles, and anyone who studies history can't deny that very literal fact. In fact, everybody who came to these shores didn't even step under our shores without a biblical mandate, without prayer, without a cross, without communion, without making some kind of covenant where they acknowledged that this land belonged to God. Now, whether there are people that don't believe in that, that's their right to not believe that, but it's still a fact nonetheless. And I do believe that I'm excited about the future for our nation as we return to God. I just returned from a Northern Virginia meeting of several hundred committed men and women who are committed to bringing that kind of change to this state and to our nation. And I believe it's only a matter of time until those principles and policies will be a blessing to everyone. I came here tonight to speak because I received a notice that, uh, Jennifer Franklin was going to be proposing some kind of, something about books. I even sent her a Gmail asking her, please explain so I won't come ignorantly, but I heard nothing back, so I still don't really fully know. I'm kind of like, uh, Ms. Melnick over that last policy thing. I was got a little bit lost in that, like, what is that all going on? But here's what I think. Every time I hear librarians or someone about this company, act like this problem is so huge and so monumental and so expensive. Heard someone say, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars would it cost? Can I make a recommendation? Go to the American Library Association and read for the last ten years all the recommendations that they're downloading to kids. Take every one of those books out of the, uh, libraries and just start there. Don't, you don't have to look at all the other ones, just start there, and we'll all be excited, we'll be happy, because they're also nasty. I've read eight out of ten, and they were all as nasty as you can get, and out of all ten, I got two videos because I didn't have the books. Uh, there was only one that I really, when I watched the DVD, it really moved me strongly, and that was about the little girl who was sold into sex slavery in, uh, India, and that was a very moving, it wouldn't be for little kids, but it was very gripping and touching, and it moved my heart. But this is what I feel like is happening in our nation, not just here, but nationally. There's a, uh, sexual cult, that's what I'm gonna call it, because I don't know what else to call it. It's a sexual cult driving, pushing, striving to get kids mutilated, drugged, I, it's mutilating their minds, and it's anti-God. God has been very clear that if you want His blessing, you want the blessing in your life, there's a, a way to do that. And what's happening in Richmond, I'm fighting against those, uh, amendments, they're trying to bend our constitution. They're trying to change language and make it what it is not. And so I've, I've been there to speak, I'll be there speaking again. My appeal to you is, I've been appealing this for several years now, is that we need to see some momentum, some change in this direction. I cannot believe as a pastor, as a, as a father, as a Christian, as a man, that you could read the same books that I've read and come away unchanged and unmoved to do something about it. If you do not, they say to see evil and do nothing is evil. And so I just say to that, you have no re, reason for, or excuse for ignorance anymore. We've read it to you. It's available to you. Get to the American Library Association, download it, they'll let your kids download it for free. Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year.
Our next speaker is Dr. William Duke, and then Melissa Luxon.
Well, hello, everybody. Um, thank you for listening. I come to you tonight also to discuss the books in schools, in particular, elementary schools. And to let you know something about me, some of you know me, I, uh, have been involved in education my entire life. Uh, I got a bachelor's degree from MIT in Earth and Planetary Sciences, a PhD from McMaster University in Hamilton, Ontario, which at the time was the number one engineering school in Canada. I, uh, taught university at, uh, the Pennsylvania State University uh, for seven years, five years at the University of Kuwait. So I've been involved with, mainly, of course, undergraduates and graduate students, but also I've been involved with, um, uh, high school supplemental programs and things of that nature. And it was great fun. I loved doing it. However, uh, we, uh, although sex education and the representation of sexual activities in books in the school library, eh, it's good at high school level. And, eh, children need, um, uh, some counseling as well. But at the elementary school level, a depiction of, um, of, um, a boyfriend who abuses his girlfriend or, uh, unusual or some might say unnatural sexual activity is not, uh, appropriate. I think some of you may agree with me. That's all I have to say. I don't want to see any graphic representations in, in elementary school books either. And finally, I'll say, uh, to all of you, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and to those of you who are departing, uh, this august body, uh, good luck in the future. And especially to Vicki Manning, who I've known the longest, all these many years, she's been so wonderful, her and Carolyn. I, uh, Carolyn, you're staying, right?
Yeah, we're at least two more years.
Vicki is leaving us, and I want to say that on behalf, oh, I'm also part of the Tidewater Liberty Partners, the former Tidewater Libertarian Party, that's Robert Dean's organization, and on behalf of everyone in that organization, we wish you Godspeed and, uh, good luck, Mrs. Manning. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is Melissa Luxon.
Good evening. We have gathered here this evening to say goodbye to Vicki Manning, whose time on the school board is finally mercifully coming to an end. While this is not technically a eulogy, I think we can all agree it's worth celebrating the death of Victoria Manning's reign over our libraries, classrooms, and collective sanity. Oh, Vicki, what a legacy you leave behind. You came in with a vision, a vision where books were terrifying, students were divided, and mere mention of LGBTQ plus topics was somehow more offensive than, say, like, actual bullying or hate speech. Takes a truly special person to be more upset with the Handmaid's Tale than by the struggles of real kids in your community. Bravo. Few could match your passion for turning school libraries into battlegrounds in the fight against knowledge. Your crusade against the so-called pornography lurking in our libraries was nothing short of inspiring. You searched high and low for scandalous material, but sadly, the raciest thing you uncovered was the Bible. I'm still laughing at the irony. We'll never forget how you bravely stood up against classics, award-winning novels, and anything that vaguely resembled empathy. Truly, you've left us wondering, have you actually ever read a book? And who could forget your tireless dedication to ensuring LGBTQ plus students knew exactly where they didn't belong? You taught us all a valuable lesson that the loudest voices in the room are sometimes the ones most in need of some deep, deep introspection and a lot of therapy. But let's not dwell on the past, shall we? After all, you're leaving us now, and isn't that the real gift? Your departure gives us a chance to rebuild our libraries and our policies, and our, most importantly, our faith in leadership. We owe you thanks for uniting the community against you. Your presence made us stronger, and for that, we are oddly grateful. So farewell, Vicki. May your future endeavors be as wildly unsuccessful as the book you published. And if you're ever tempted to run for office again, might I suggest you try somewhere with fewer books, like maybe A Nice Quiet Desert, or I heard Russia is nice in the winter. Um, Ms. Owens, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Riggs, your presence on the board will sorely be missed. Thank you for your years of dedicated service in children's education in Virginia Beach. Mr. Callen, Ms. Weems, Ms. Brown, Mr. Cole Pepper, enjoy your remaining two years on the board, trying to dismantle public education. It will be your last. Your recorded actions the last two years has made recruiting candidates, great candidates, very easy, as you can see based on the results of the twenty twenty-four election. So your replacements have already been identified and are already getting, uh, to work in your district's meeting with constituents. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Okay, moving on now to information. We're gonna begin tonight with the Policy Review Committee's recommendations, and we welcome Cammy, Cammy Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Cammy Lanetti. On behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be bringing forth three recommendations from the November twenty-first PRC meeting. The first one has to do with Policy six thirty-three, which is under Instruction Section, has to do with Special Education. The cha, the changes are somewhat minor. In Section A, under A one, we're correcting some mischaracterization of the requirements for students involved in private school. Same thing we're looking at in Section A two also. Um, inappropriate explanation of the childifying recommendations. Other than that, in the rest of the poll, there are just some minor scrivener changes and some removing of editor's notes on there. There are no further recommendations for the changes in Policy six thirty-three, Special Education. Are there any questions about six thirty-three? Here are no questions about six thirty-three. We will move on to six sixty-three, which is copyrighted material. The only thing we're recommending here are some formatting changes and some minor scrivener changes. Other than that, we are not recommending any further recommendations for Policy six sixty-three, which is copyrighted material. So are there questions about six sixty-three? Here are no questions about six sixty-three. We'll move on all to the Here are no questions about six sixty-three. We'll move on all to the six seventy-two, which is also under instruction. Again, the only recommended changes are formatting changes and to remove some outdated language in what will now be Section A two, referencing procedures that no longer place after two thousand seventeen or eighteen. Other than that, we are not recommending any changes. Are there any questions about Policy six seventy-two? Here are no questions about six seventy-two. Those are the only recommended changes this time for the Information Agenda.
I'm just waiting to make sure you guys, do you guys have any questions? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to College Coursework and Readiness Assessments. And we welcome Robert Feigl, Research Specialist in the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. This evening, I will be sharing data on Advanced Placement Participation and Performance, as well as participation and performance on college readiness assessments to include the PSAT and SAT. As a preview of the results, compared to the prior year, AP course enrollment, exam participation, and performance on AP exams increased. Overall, performance on the PSAT math section increased, while performance on the evidence-based reading and writing section decreased. And performance on the SAT increased on both the evidence-based reading and writing section and the math section. We will begin our review with the Advanced Placement or AP information. The AP program provides high school students opportunities to take rigorous courses. Students who take the corresponding AP exam for the course and earn a qualifying score of three or higher may receive college credit depending on the policies of the institution where the student eventually enrolls. If for any reason there is not a Virginia Beach staff member available to provide instruction for an AP course or not enough students to fill a particular course, students may take advantage of the AP course offerings through Virtual Virginia. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, students in VBCPS were enrolled in thirty-eight of the College Board's AP courses. All students interested in enrolling in an AP course are encouraged to do so. Students who might struggle due to increased demands can meet with their AP teacher and arrange supports for the course, such as tutoring. The AP exams are optional and do have a fee associated with them. To increase student access, especially for student groups who are underrepresented in advanced coursework, VBCPS pays the exam fee for students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. The Division has also partnered with two organizations, the National Math and Science Initiative and the Equal Opportunity Schools. Both organizations are focused on providing students equitable learning opportunities by providing funding for AP exams and increasing student representation in advanced coursework. Each year, the College Board awards honor roll distinctions to the students who meet their established criteria related to participation and performance. In twenty-three, twenty-four, six schools were awarded an honor roll status. Five schools were awarded bronze status and one school was awarded silver status. As a note, dual enrollment courses are another option for Virginia Beach students in eleventh and twelfth grades to earn college credit. Dual enrollment course options are often preferred by students because the attainment of college credit is not dependent on a qualifying AP exam score. So overall, thirty-three percent of Virginia Beach high school students were enrolled in at least one AP course during twenty-three, twenty-four school year. After decreases in overall AP course participation during twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there have been increases. And AP course participation is nearly back to pre-pandemic levels. When the percentage of students enrolled in AP courses last year was examined by student group, Asian students had the highest percentage of students enrolled at fifty-eight percent, followed by white students at thirty-nine percent. When compared to the prior year, participation for all student groups increased between two and five percentage points. As noted on the previous slide, AP course participation is not the only opportunity students have to potentially earn college credit. Students may also participate in dual enrollment courses and receive college credit based on course performance. There has been an increase of five percentage points in the percentage of juniors and seniors taking dual enrollment courses from twelve percent in nineteen twenty to seventeen percent in twenty-three, twenty-four. There'll be more information about dual enrollment in the Academic and Career Planning Presentation later this evening. So this chart displays the percentage of AP course enrollees who took at least one AP exam over the last five years. The percentage of students taking at least one AP exam was lowest in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and was impacted by the pandemic, but has increased fourteen percentage points since then to seventy percent for twenty-three, twenty-four. The chart at the bottom of the slide displays the percentage of AP course enrollees by student group who took at least one AP exam over the last three years. For twenty-three, twenty-four, Asian students had the highest percentage of students taking an AP exam at eighty percent, followed by white students at seventy-four percent. Black students had the lowest percentage of AP course enrollees taking an AP exam at fifty-one percent. The percentage of students taking at least one AP exam have increased for all student groups since twenty-one, twenty-two. Black and Asian students had the largest increases in students taking an AP exam at five percentage points. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of students scoring three or higher by student group for the last five years. In twenty-three, twenty-four, the overall percentage of students scoring three or higher was sixty-six percent and increased seven percentage points from last year. Additionally, the students earning a three or higher has increased for each student group. Black, Hispanic, and multiracial students increased over ten percentage points, with black students having the largest increase at thirteen percentage points. When examined by student group, black students had the lowest percentage of students scoring a three or higher each year, and Asian students had the highest percentage scoring three or higher, followed by white and multiracial students. This pattern has been fairly consistent each year. And this slide shows the percent of AP exams with a score of three or higher for VBCPS, the state, and across the nation. VBCPS has had somewhat lower percentage of AP exams with scores of three or higher compared to the state and nation. However, as an important note, it is important to note that VBCPS historically has had somewhat higher percentages of high school students taking AP exams than across Virginia or the nation. And it should also be noted that the College Board has recalibrated the scores for nine AP exams since twenty twenty-two. These recalibrations are standard practice by the College Board and reflect the alignment between the rigorous scoring of the AP exams and the current grading practices of the equivalent college coursework. So the next portion of the presentation will focus on participation and performance on college readiness assessments, which will include the PSAT and the SAT. Before we examine these data, it is important to highlight current trends with the assessments. As a reminder, prior to the pandemic, some colleges and universities discontinued the use of college entrance exams as a requirement. The pandemic increased the number of schools not requiring the submission of assessment scores. For admissions as of November twenty twenty-four, eighty-six percent of the accredited institutions are test optional and four percent are test-free. Although many universities like George Mason, James Madison, and Virginia Commonwealth no longer require tests like the SAT for admissions purposes, many schools use the test scores for scholarships, honors colleges, and specific academic programs. As a result, Virginia Beach staff recommends that students take these assessments and supports them through the process to maximize their post-secondary opportunities. So the first college readiness assessment we will examine is the PSAT NMSQT or the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. The PSAT is created and administered by the College Board. It is offered to all eleven, grade eleven students each fall and paid for by the Division. There are three tests, reading, writing, and math. Grade-level college and career readiness benchmarks are provided for two sections. Evidence-based reading and writing, which is a combination of the reading and writing sections and mathematics. Students may opt in to having their information and score shared with colleges and scholarship organizations. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of Virginia Beach students participating in the PSAT over the last five years. As a reminder, participation in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one decreased significantly due to the pandemic. In twenty-three, twenty-four, participation decreased by six percentage points from twenty-two, twenty-three. However, when we examine the most recently available participation data for the state and nation in twenty-three, twenty-four, higher percentages of VBCPS grade eleven students continued to participate in the PSAT than students across the state and nation, which were around the fifty percent range. The PSAT data on this slide is from Fall twenty twenty-three. A lower percentage of Virginia Beach students met the benchmarks when compared to the state. The pattern of results is likely related to VBCPS having a higher percentage of students taking the PSAT than the state or nation. This slide displays the percentage of eleventh grade students meeting or exceeding the benchmarks on the PSAT by student group. For the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark, Asian and white student groups had the highest percentage of students meeting the benchmark at seventy-four and sixty-nine percent respectively, while black students had the lowest percentage at thirty-three percent. In eleventh grade, less than half of the student groups met the math benchmark, except for Asian students with fifty-six percent meeting the math benchmark. Prior data, prior data analyses in VBCPS have shown that higher percentages of students who took Algebra II and advanced courses met the PSAT benchmarks than those who did not. So this slide displays the percentage of students meeting the PSAT ERW benchmark by student group for VBCPS students over the last three years. Overall, there was a decrease in percentage of students meeting the ERW benchmark, but compared to last year, Asian and white students increased by one percentage point. Black students maintain, and black students maintained their percentage at thirty-three percent. This slide displays the percentage of students meeting the PSAT math benchmark by student group for VBCPS over the last three years. Overall, there was an increase in the percentage of students meeting the math benchmark. Compared to the prior year, all student groups had an increase in the percentage of students meeting the math benchmark, with the exception of multiracial students. Increases ranged from six to eleven percentage points compared to last year, with Asian students having the largest increase at eleven percentage points. So as a quick overview of the next college readiness assessment, the SAT is a test created and administered by the College Board. It is typically taken in the spring of a student's eleventh grade year or the fall of the senior year. The SAT is administered on Saturdays at various Virginia Beach high schools. Students are responsible for paying all fees for the tests and providing their own transportation to and from the testing location. Financial assistance for the SAT is available through fee waivers provided by the College Board. And individual schools and students can also request additional financial assistance through the Access College Foundation. The SAT contains three tests, reading, writing, and math, with an optional fourth essay section. The chart on this slide displays the estimated SAT participation rate based on the SAT College Board reports and the VBCPS report of graduates. Since twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the percentage of students taking the SAT has decreased from fifty-six percent to thirty-six percent for the class of twenty twenty-four. As a reminder, this may be due to the fact that many colleges and universities have discontinued the use of the SAT as an entrance requirement. Historically, when compared to the state and nation, VBCPS has had a lower percentage of students participating in the SAT. The table at the bottom of the slide displays characteristics of SAT test takers for the class of twenty twenty-four for Virginia Beach schools, public schools in Virginia, and the national group of SAT test takers. The numbers in the table represent the demographic characteristics for only those students who took the SAT. For example, one thousand seven hundred and seventy Virginia Beach students in the class of twenty twenty-four took the SAT. Of these students, two hundred and one or eleven percent were Asian. Compared to the total group across the nation, Virginia Beach had a higher percentage of Asian, black, multiracial, and white students who took the SAT. Overall data for Virginia Beach test takers were more similar to public school test takers. Because of this, comparisons on the next few slides will focus on Virginia and Virginia public school data. However, data for the total group is included for your reference. The chart on this slide displays the percentage of students by student group meeting the evidence-based reading and writing benchmark on the SAT for Virginia Beach, public schools in Virginia, and all SAT test takers. When compared to the state, Virginia Beach had a higher percentage of students across all student groups meeting the ERW benchmark. This slide displays the percentage of students meeting the SAT ERW benchmark by student group for VBCPS students over the last three years. Overall, there has been an increase in the percentage of students meeting the ERW benchmark. Compared to the prior year, Asian students maintained their percentage at ninety-one percent. Black and Hispanic student groups both had increases in the percentage meeting the benchmark, and the multiracial and white student groups had decreases. This chart displays the percentage of students by student group meeting the math benchmark on the SAT. Overall, a higher percentage of VBCPS students met the math benchmark compared to public schools in Virginia. Compared to the state, Virginia Beach had higher percentages of black, Hispanic, and white students meeting the math benchmark. This slide displays the percentage of students meeting the SAT bench, SAT math benchmark by student group for VBCPS over the last three years. Overall, the percentage of students meeting the math benchmark in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four increased three percentage points. Compared to the prior year, all student groups had an increase in the percentages meeting the math benchmark, with the exception of the multiracial student group. As a brief summary, participation in AP exams increased and PSAT participation decreased. The percentages of students participating in AP exams and the PSAT have been higher than the state and nation, and participation continued to decrease on the SAT. When overall performance was analyzed for VBCPS students, sixty-six percent of AP exams attempted received a score of three or higher. Fifty-seven percent of the eleventh grade PSAT test takers met the ERW benchmark and thirty-one percent met the math benchmark. Eighty-six percent of students from the class of twenty twenty-four who took the SAT met the ERW benchmark and fifty-six percent met the math benchmark. A higher percentage of VBCPS test takers met the SAT benchmarks for both sections than Virginia test takers, but VBCPS performance was lower on the AP and PSAT assessments. Compared to the prior year, the percentage of VBCPS students scoring three or higher on an AP exam, meeting the benchmarks on the math and ERW sections of the SAT and meeting the math benchmark on the PSAT have all increased. The percentage of students meeting the math benchmark on the PSAT ERW section decreased. And finally, when performance was analyzed by student group, AP exam participation and performance increased for all student groups. The percentage of black and Hispanic students who met the ERW and math SAT benchmarks increased, and percentages meeting the benchmarks were higher than Virginia. This concludes the presentation. We're available for questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Callen.
Thank you for this detailed report. Question. There is a reference to the fact that there were scores three or higher. What is the highest score possible? Is it a five?
A five, on the AP, yes, sir.
Thank you. Secondly, you make reference time and again of meeting benchmarks. But I don't know what that means relative to a score. Can you help me understand the placement of the benchmark in the overall scoring system?
So the benchmark is set to show that the student should have success in college, basically. And so it's set at a certain quartile so that if they meet that, then they, they met the benchmark. I don't know if I'm answering the question correctly, though.
Well, it's hard to get my hands wrapped around it relative to an overall score. I guess what I'm trying to understand.
Yes, sir. Mr. Callen, I'm going to give you an analogy. So we know traditionally in a grading system, seventy percent would indicate passing. On the SAT, on the PSAT, they use a mathematical methodology and formula to determine what is the score that gives the greatest indication that a student would be successful in that college course, and that becomes the benchmark. And every few years, just like they do with any nationally normed test, they go back and re, they take another look at that benchmark to see if it's gone up or gone down. So that's a normed score that's used to determine whether or not a student is on track in that area to succeed in college or off track.
So a future predictor, so to speak.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Thank you very much. Okay, so on, I guess which slide it is doesn't really matter, but it says PSAT participation has been higher than the state and nation. Could that be attributed to the fact that we offer that to our students, our other divisions doing that, or is that just Virginia Beach?
So I think Mr. Jamison can provide specifics, but we do provide it to all tenth and eleventh graders. Correct? He'll come clarify.
I'm up next. So just, okay. For PSAT, for tenth graders, we administer PSAT ten. For eleventh graders, it's PSAT NMSQT, because that's the one. For eleventh graders, it's PSAT NMSQT, because that's the one time they can qualify for the National Merit Scholarship Test. For your question in regards to what other school divisions elect to do, it it really is up to the local school division. Not all school divisions choose to pay for all eleventh graders to take that assessment. Uh, we do in Virginia Beach, which is why we do have that significant higher participation rate than what you see across, well, on average, across the state and across the nation.
And so I I guess what I'm, um, what I'm really looking at here to me is, is it's possible in some of these metrics, um, that our scores are a little bit lower because we may have a student that really isn't interested and invested in that that college track, um, taking it, you know, just to see how they do, and that could impact those scores?
I think motivation is always an impact, you know, on data. I think also is we need to to keep in mind, the assessments are designed to cover core subject content.
Okay, so they should-
And we have students who are taking this assessment, or these assessments, who have not yet taken some of the math courses that are covered on the assessment, who will eventually take it, which is why we see the increase in scores when we get to SAT. And then to your point, those who are taking the SAT are those who are choosing that pathway and indicating as such by taking the test. So yes, motivation, as well as access to course content from a completion standpoint, or they could be in the course and haven't quite reached it, or they're about to take the course in the upcoming semester.
Okay. Um, so I believe last year we had a similar presentation, and, um, I had mentioned how it would be nice to have the data to show how our students in our AP classes performed, um, from a grade perspective as compared to those that got a three or higher on that AP exam. So for example, how many of our students that got As in the course, um, then went on to pass that AP, um, course, and I I still would be very interested, um, in having that information to ensure that our students are really truly prepared. Um, if they're getting an A in the class, they should definitely be able to do pretty well on that AP exam, um, barring, you know, unusual circumstances or a difficult day. Um, so I I would like to, um, perhaps next time have that information as as, um, I mentioned last year. And then the other thing is, is, um, and I don't know if maybe it could be covered somewhere else, but I think it would be suitable here is, as you're well aware, um, I'm very passionate about the dual enrollment piece and the fact that that's an opportunity for our students. So I would, I would love to see, um, what our dual enrollment students are, um, you know, doing and how many of them have, so we have a percentage here, and I get that we're just doing a percentage and not a number, but it would be great to know how many students chose that dual enrollment route.
So right now, we have 1,910 students taking dual enrollment courses.
That was really quick thinking off the top of your head there.
It helps.
It's almost like you knew I was gonna ask.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Guess you you hit send on that email. Good job. Mrs. Weems.
Yes. Well, I can completely understand the dilemma sort of with the PSAT and SAT of why we, because everybody takes it and they're not motivated some. But flipping to the AP, is our goal to get as many students as possible to take an AP class, or is our goal to get as many as possible to take the AP and score three or above? So is there a concern on your part? Because we're so high, um, according to the state and nation on participation, but we're a little under with the scoring of the three and O. And I'm I'm hoping it's both. So that was my first kind of observation, and and my second question is, do you know why it is lower? Is it that a lot of our kids aren't taking the exam? And and so I would kind of like to have some more data with Ms. Brown's data, and also who has taken the course but not the exam?
So to answer your question, the first part I heard was, are we pushing for more AP? I think when you look at what we've talked about across Strategic Plan, it's increasing advanced course opportunities to be either AP, dual enrollment, uh, even in the CTE field as well, in terms of what they're getting access to their advanced level that have a rigor that we believe allows them to fit those three E's of enlisted, employed, and enrolled. Uh, when you start looking at students' decision-making when they meet with their school counselors, they ask very hard questions, very similar to what I hear Ms. Brown ask and you just ask. What is the AP course going to do for me going into college versus the dual enrollment course? So you see that twelve, would you say the number was, Bobby, 1,900 some odd students that were-
Ten, nine.
Ten, taking dual enrollment. That increase has come because students are now seeing the value in that versus they're not going to give me an AP credit in college. So we don't necessarily push one over the other. It comes through the course request process, the pathways that students are looking to determine to take, to say, here's the best course offerings for you through our academic and career plan. Um, and I think that's where we continue to look back around those advanced course opportunities. And I, you know, Bobby makes a good point about that math, and Robert said it in his presentation. We really are taking a hard look when you talk advanced courses is where, when are we getting kids to Algebra II? And who's getting access to Algebra II and when? And how are we ensuring that they're future-ready to have those courses? So candidly, we're having a lot of discussions around what is it to graduate, and then what does it mean to be future-ready? Those two things do not necessarily mean the same things if we're saying they're not getting that advanced coursework opportunities. So that's the long answer to your question, but that's really the take we we've had there. And then your second question was around performance.
Yeah, what percentage of the students are actually taking the exam? Is that, does that, is that why our numbers are a little bit lower than we would expect them to be, or is there another reason?
From a participation standpoint, the seventy percent of those enrolled are the then those who tested.
We're way ahead, this, we're way above the state and the nation as far as participation of AP. We're under them as far as those who participate are scoring below a three.
Correct.
Yeah.
And so that's, that the, it's going to be a combination of a few things. One, we have students who are taking the more rigorous course for the challenge of the course itself, not the exam.
And then just not the exam.
Correct. You then have educators who are doing a great job across our school division, encouraging students to take the assessment. And some, it's their first AP course, and a lot of our students, they're taking their first AP course. We've seen increases in AP human geography. We have increases in AP seminar. We have increases in multiple AP courses. So as they're being introduced to that level of rigor on an assessment, their first go-round has been lower. But our participation is up.
Yeah.
To explain that connection.
Yeah.
As students persist, though, and I'll share some data in a second, we do have record numbers of students earning a three or higher on five or more exams. Um, we've just never had it, not trying to take away from our presentation, but it's a thousand one. Um, so actually, that's early college scholars, but we'll get to those in a second. But no, we're seeing growth with that. And I, but I want to also add a piece, because it comes from your support when it comes to access to rigorous coursework. Dual enrollment, for example, legislation changes, we now can offer dual enrollment courses for free if it's being taught in our building. We have strongly promoted that. But with your support, Dr. Robertson in particular, we have been able to expand that to all dual enrollment courses. So originally, if you were taking the course at TCC, you still had an associated cost. We have eliminated that cost in Virginia Beach. So if you go to TCC to take the course because your teacher, the teacher in your building does not exist to teach that class, you can still take that for free. If you take that course online through TCC in Virginia Beach, we have made that course available for free. So that's where some of our increases with CTE, as well as dual enrollment coursework and the ability to be taught for free or accessible to our students for free, has really grown our numbers. That is all part of the three E initiative, especially when it comes to enrollment, and I'd say enlistment, obviously, employment, but the different options that they have of students have available to the moving forward.
And if you don't mind, Ms. Weems, because you, I think the number that is in the presentation that gets lost is we offer thirty-eight AP courses. I don't think there's many divisions around that give that level of course offerings that I think is going to naturally sometimes draw down the participation on the exam. Because students are becoming very savvy of what is the exam I need at UVA, what is the exam I need at William &amp; Mary, I still want to take elevated coursework, do I want to pay two-hundred-and-eighty dollars for four AP exams if they're not going to take it? So they're becoming very strategic. But to support Bobby's comment there, I, we have to be very proud of the opportunity we provide our kids on a very high level of coursework. You see it all the time in the presentations. It gets lost in the numbers sometimes, but thirty-eight is a pretty significant amount. And it speaks to the level of quality of our staff as well that are capable of teaching those courses on a variety of levels. So I think that's another kind of reason where people are balancing that act. If I'm taking two AP classes, I'll probably take those two exams. If I'm taking five, I'm going to negotiate what that looks like.
Yeah.
Based on where I'm going to school.
Yeah, that definitely makes sense.
So just, I wanted to add that numerical context as well.
Thank you. Plus, the the college, like, the dual enrollment class, when when you finish that class, you're walking away with a grade, and 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 the college accepts that grade. And but an AP course, a college will only accept that if you score a certain, a certain number on the AP exam. And so I can tell you even, you know, my daughter's thirty now, but she took AP, um, courses in college. She had a beautiful resume, right? It was beautiful. Um, but she elected not to take any of the AP exams, um, because it didn't matter to her. She just, she was going to spend four years in school, and she didn't mind not shaving off a couple of classes. She just didn't care. But it was all about getting in, and she got into six universities, and she was proud of herself. So I think that's actually some logical thinking. I was more impressed actually with the growth of, you know, the number of students. It was, it was significant. Um, and of course, always, we're so ahead, and we offer so much for all of our students, that data is always skewed when it's presented with our numbers compared to the state as far as, um, the actual scores, just because we offer the test to so many. And we see that also with, um, what's the other tests that we give it to so many and nobody else does? Um, the-
ASVAB?
No, that, and I'm looking at Mr. Delaney.
Yeah. I'll have to look at, uh, Mr. Jamison, who has all the numbers this evening.
There's a national test that that we have, okay, well, anyhow, um, I think that's a legitimate, no, but I think it's a legitimate comparison that, um, with AP and dual enrollment.
If we could just get Ms. Brown's data and the data of who's not taking the test, just because of the reasons that we cited up here, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
So, uh, let me offer two, two comments. One would be, um, with the new school support framework that counts for accountability at state level, um, performance, uh, judged by a score of three or higher earns points in that matrix. And so it is a goal for us to not only increase enrollment in those AP and dual enrollment courses, but also to attain a passing score because that gets us bonus points. And I can, I, I will, we'll get the data for you, but I'll tell you, my my hypothesis is, we used to run, I used to run the correlations at Salem between course grades and performance on this, on the AP tests. There is a correlation between the kids that make an A or a B and the number of kids who make a three or higher. Um, so it'll be interesting to see when we look, run that data, so let us not forget, somebody write it down, because clearly we forgot it last year, um, to to look at that data overall, but then also, like, who's getting those scores and who's not.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Truly noted.
Thank you, Cheryl.
For the record on camera. Thank you. Thank you very much. I see no other questions. And so with that, we will move to the man of the hour, Mr. Jamison, Executive Director of Student Support Services, and Ann Chounds, welcome. Nice to see you again. Coordinator of School Counseling Services.
So good evening. Um, there's going to be some information that I previously shared that we will touch on in this presentation. Uh, but my name is Robert Jamison, Executive Director for Office of Student Support Services, and I'm joined this evening by Mrs. Annie Chounds, Coordinator for School Counseling Services, to share information about academic and career planning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. This evening, we'll review the topics displayed here, and I'll pause so you can preview those before we begin. So to begin, I want to share the local definition of academic and career planning in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. It is a student-driven, adult-supported process in which students create and cultivate their own unique information-based visions for post-secondary success. Through self-exploration, career exploration, and skill development, students will be equipped to accomplish their personalized goals. With the definition in mind, academic and career planning is directly aligned with many aspects of our strategic framework. Specifically, Goal Three, Strategy Six, outlines our commitment to empowering students. We work to engage in rigorous, authentic, and student-centered learning to help them identify their passions, take ownership of their learning, and create a plan for pursuing their post-secondary goals. All schools and all grade levels participate in this work to ensure students have the requisite skills for scholastic and post-secondary success. Additionally, as noted in the twenty-four, twenty-five Strategic Action Agenda, VB CPS staff continue to provide students deeper learning experiences that promote student reflection, increase ownership of learning, and form the academic and career plan, as well as foster the acquisition of the attributes in the division's graduate profile. Building future-ready students is one of the guiding principles for academic and career planning, aimed at ensuring students have the necessary skills to be employed, enlisted, enrolled, or entrepreneurs upon graduation. Another guiding principle for academic and career planning is the on-time graduation rate. Although the OTG, as we call it, is based on the percentage of students in the graduation cohort who earned a board-approved or Board of Education-approved diploma within four years of entering high school, the importance on students' readiness for high school cannot be overstated. This means academic and career planning truly is a K-12 initiative with staff from all grade levels contributing. The College Career and Civic Readiness Index is one measure of this work, and this will be replaced by the three E framework in the new VDOE Accountability System, which you just heard from Dr. Robertson. Over the past several years, the index measured student participation or preparation, excuse me, for college and careers while in high school by student completion of advanced-level coursework, like advanced placement, dual enrollment, and international backlory courses, CTE courses and credentials, and JRTC coursework and credentials, and work-based learning as well as service learning. With the OTG and College and Career Civic Readiness Index in mind, the following are some ACP celebrations from the past year. Speaking of the on-time graduation rate, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has continued to maintain record levels, which stands at ninety-six point one percent for the 2024 cohort year, and a dropout rate of two-point-one percent. Some specific data points we could share down the road, but sixty-one percent of our graduating class earned an Advanced Studies diploma, and VB CPS outperformed Virginia's OTG and grad- and on, and dropout rates. The class of 2024 was offered one-hundred-eighteen million, seven-hundred-thirty-five thousand, two-hundred-nine dollars, and accepted fifty-seven million, five-hundred-sixty-six thousand, nine-hundred-twelve dollars in scholarship monies. As you've just heard from us a few moments ago, the number of students taking AP courses and AP exams continues to rise, and last school year, we administered over eighteen, or eight-thousand-six-hundred advanced placement exams with more Black and Latino students participating than ever before. More importantly, with the increased number of students taking these courses and exams, as you heard from Mr. Weigel, we continue to excel, with sixty-six percent of students who took an exam scoring a three or higher, as Mr. Callen asked, a five being the highest score, and we had one-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-four AP scholars, which means we had thirteen-hundred students, more than thirteen-hundred students scored a three or higher on at least three different exams. VB CPS is committed to expanding dual enrollment. As I just mentioned, we had one-thousand-nine-hundred-ten students currently accessing dual enrollment courses, and I just want to point out, that's over a hundred-and-twenty courses that we now offer. In 2016, coming in as Coordinator of School Counseling, we were expanding to just sixteen courses at that time. And by 2024, we are looking at over one-hundred-and-twenty courses being available to our students for dual enrollment. In June 2024, one-hundred percent of IB students obtained their Advanced Studies diploma, and ninety-six percent of them earned their IB diploma. With these AP, DE, and IB accomplishments, one-thousand-one students who graduated in the 2024 cohort earned the Early College Scholar Certificate, meaning they graduated with at least fifteen transferable college credits. During the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, VB CPS earned fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-thirty industry credentials, which was eight-hundred-and-ten more than the previous year. And based on responses from the Senior Exit Survey, we had one-hundred-and-twenty-four students indicate they plan to enlist in the military upon graduation. The VB CPS K-12 Scope and Sequence Document for Academic and Career Planning organizes the kinds of student experiences we offer in each grade level. For elementary school, we focus on awareness. The middle school, we focus on exploration. And at the high school level, we concentrate on readiness. Mrs. Annie Chounds, Coordinator for School Counseling, will now share some examples of the work for each level, as well as provide an overview of events and next steps.
Good evening. At the elementary level, students participate in activities that connect their interests to jobs and careers. In the late elementary grades, students are introduced to the sixteen, I should probably click. Okay. Sixteen career clusters and select courses for middle school based on their career interests. School counselors and teachers lead lessons and assign projects to build excitement for the various career pathways available to them. And students get to use nonfiction texts, practice writing and presentation skills, and learn more about the various pathways in Virginia Beach and beyond. At the middle school level, stu- the student academic and career planning experience focuses on exploration. Students participate in activities allowing them to explore jobs and careers based on their interest. They also explore specific future-ready career skills needed to succeed- They also explore specific future-ready career skills needed to succeed in careers. For example, the pictures on the screen are from VBCPS Academy Night. And field trips to the public library in which students were able to listen to experts in different fields. All students in grades six to eight participate in five academic and career planning advisory lessons per year. These lessons align with competencies and tasks set forth by the VDOE standards of accreditation for career explorations. As part of the advisory lesson, students begin an academic and career plan. At the high school level, students are in the final stages of preparation to join the workforce, enlist in the military, or enroll in college after graduating. Students are provided the opportunity to engage in coursework aligned to their post-secondary goals. Take career assessments such as the ASVAB, participate in service, and work-based learning. The Office of Student Support Services and members of the secondary D-TALL and K-12 teams. Also recently came together to create three academic and career planning lessons. Delivered by high school teachers to learn more about available career and course pathways. VBCPS utilizes the Equal Opportunity Schools Program to learn about student aspirations regarding careers, post-secondary plans. And student perceptions of bear, of or barriers to accessing AP, DE, and other rigorous courses. As shared in previous school board meetings, EOS provides the school staff with student insight cards to allow staff to learn about student education goals. Career interests, and what would encourage them to take AP, DE, and rigorous courses. This information provides school staff with the opportunity to implement targeted interventions with students to encourage enrollment in advanced-level coursework. Throughout the first quarter, schools have engaged, actively engaged in the academic and career planning process. To start the school year, high school counselors supported seniors in the post-secondary planning process through multiple events. Such as family information nights, college representative, and military recruiter visits. Families also have the option to attend individual information nights for an in-depth view of that program. College Night provided students and families the opportunity to meet with a hundred and twelve colleges and universities. Speak with access college foundation advisors, military, VBCPS military-connected school counselors, central office team members from OPEC. Military recruiters, and five mental health groups in the area. The military-connected school counselors hosted post-secondary options for military dependents to discuss post-secondary planning. And the educational benefits available to military dependents. Course selection is an important part of the academic and career planning process. Students currently enrolled in grades five through eleven are actively engaged in the course section, selection process through different activities all year. I will pause a moment so that you can review the progression of support provided. Know that counselors support and customize pathways and course selection to help students reach their goal along the way. As, as a reminder, families are able to review course selections in parent view and make changes to course selections in the spring. Throughout the remainder of the school year, there will be division-wide and school da-, school-based academic and career planning events. The events listed on the screen provide students the hands-on opportunities to learn about different careers and celebrate their accomplishments. For the first time, the Office of Student Support Services and the Office of Career and Technical Education. Intend to collaborate to host a division-wide employment event and celebrate students that have chosen to enlist in the military. In summary, academic and career planning is a journey implemented on the K-12 continuum in VBCPS. At each level, students are provided opportunities to deepen their awareness of the connections between their interests and careers. Explore their interests and strengths to learn about careers that may be of interest to them. And participate in activities to ensure that they are ready to pursue their post-secondary goals. The course selection process is an important part of academic and career planning. As it allows for students to connect their interests and posts, post-secondary goals with courses offered in VBCPS. The school ba-, the school-based and division-wide events are hosted throughout the year, giving students exposure to opportunities available to them. In middle and high school and after graduation. The academic and career planning work currently being done and implemented in VBCPS. Is yielding favorable results to post-secondary student success and aligns with the VDOE. That brings us to the conclusion of our presentation today. Our team stands ready if you have any questions.
Okay. I do, but I'll wait to see um, oh, I have a comment. Alright, Ms. Brown?
Mine's a really quick question. So on slide twelve, um you referenced EOS, uh what is that in abbreviation for?
The Equal Opportunity Survey.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I really wanted to thank you, um Ms. Chounds specifically. I, I was with you at the Superintendent's Roundtable, and I just wanna say. You guys are impressive. The amount of opportunities that you offer our students is really, really impressive. Um and deeply appreciated. Um. I'm hoping that at some point the state recognizes um the real work that school counselors do. And they lower that ratio because it is incredibly difficult to meet the needs of. Um all of the students in our buildings, but you guys do an exceptional job. Um and I, I'm, I'm really grateful. So much so, yeah.
Thank you.
So for reference, we had um Doctor Robertson Superintendent's um. Um student group and one of the um, one of the tables was the career readiness. And um we, we learned a lot. Um and, and we should really all be very proud of the work that the division is doing. So, moving on now to the two-year eval, uh comprehensive evaluation of Canvas. And we welcome Doctor Allison Bach, Program Evaluation Specialist in the Office of Planning, Innovation, and Accountability.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board, and Doctor Robertson. Tonight, I will provide an overview of the key findings and recommendations from the Year Two Evaluation of Canvas. The evaluation report you received in your agenda materials provides additional details. The main purpose of a learning management system includes providing an application for accessing educational content. Delivering course content to students and assessing students' learning. The Virginia Department of Education adopted Canvas as a statewide LMS in twenty twenty-one. They are providing Canvas free for all school divisions through twenty-five, twenty-six. Virginia Beach began piloting Canvas with seven schools in twenty-one, twenty-two. Beginning in twenty-two, twenty-three, all schools were expected to use Canvas for grades three through twelve. At the elementary school level, the expectations for using Canvas were, were more flexible. And these teachers also had access to another platform called CSOL. In addition, Mastery Connect was purchased by the division in twenty-two, twenty-three. As a platform to administer division-wide assessments and is integrated within Canvas. Canvas and Mastery Connect are both in structure applications. The evaluation focused on the instructional and assessment components of Canvas, data management and integration processes. Professional learning, parent access, progress toward meeting outcome goals, stakeholder, um stakeholder satisfaction. And costs to the division. The evaluation also addressed progress toward recommendation areas from the Year One Implementation Evaluation. Staff, students in grades four to twelve, and parents were surveyed in April twenty twenty-four. Overall response rates and total number of respondents are shown on the slide. Respondents were provided an initial question regarding whether they use Canvas during the school year. Survey data will be provided for those who indicated they use Canvas. In addition, student data were gathered from Canvas and cost data were collected. The first evaluation question focused on the instructional and assessment components of Canvas. Canvas offers teachers the ability to design and deliver high-quality instructional materials for their students. To ensure access to high-quality materials, the Department of Teaching and Learning provided staff curriculum resources. When teachers were surveyed about using these resources for their Canvas courses, as shown by the first set of bars. Higher percentages of elementary school and middle school teachers indicated they used these resources than high school teachers. As shown by the arrow, there was a notable increase at the high school level. When surveyed about using Canvas with students, higher percentages of secondary teachers than grades three through five teachers. Indicated they designed and stored content for students in their courses. And agreed they provided a variety of learning activities for students such as assignments and discussion boards. In comparison to twenty-two, twenty-three, the percentage of grades three through five teachers who provided a variety of learning activities through Canvas increased. Regarding the ease of using Canvas for students. At least ninety percent of students at all levels agreed they could easily find things they needed for their classes in Canvas. Canvas also allows teachers to assess student learning through a variety of methods, including discussion boards, assignments, and quizzes. In addition, Mastery Connect has been used as the platform to administer division-wide assessments. Mastery Connect is integrated within Canvas and allows for assessments to be aligned with standards. Overall, at least seventy-six percent of secondary teachers agreed they used a variety of assessment methods in Canvas to check for learning. They use Canvas to provide formative feedback, and Canvas allow them to effectively monitor student learning. Lower percentages of elementary school teachers agree. When surveyed specifically about Mastery Connect, as shown by the last set of bars, seventy-four percent of middle school teachers agreed. Mastery Connect allowed them to effectively monitor student learning. While sixty-one percent of high school teachers and fifty-six percent of elementary school teachers agree. As shown on the figure, there were notable increases in agreement at the secondary levels for nearly all items related to assessing and monitoring student learning. In addition, when students were surveyed about assessment in Canvas. At least eighty-six percent of students at all levels agreed they could show what they knew in a variety of ways in Canvas. The second evaluation question focused on data management and integration processes with other platforms. When instructional technology specialists were surveyed about transitioning data between Canvas and other systems. ITS agreement was higher for items about the processes being accurate compared to the items about the processes being efficient. Regarding accessing third-party applications, from sixty-seven to eighty-two percent of teachers agreed accessing third-party applications was efficient. As shown on the slide, agree, agreement increased notably at all levels. A recommendation area from the Year One Implementation Evaluation focused on secondary grade syncing. From Canvas to Synergy, which is the official grade book of record. The recommendation was to develop a communication plan for disseminating resolutions for commonly experienced issues. As shown by the figure on the slide, forty-six percent of secondary teachers and fifty-seven percent of ITSs. Agreed the grade passback process was efficient and accurate in twenty-three, twenty-four. Agreement remained relatively low, although there was some increase in agreement from the prior year. Based on a new survey question, when secondary staff were asked about the support they received. Related to the grade passback process during twenty-three, twenty-four, at least eighty percent of secondary ITSs agreed helpful resources or strategies. Were provided. Somewhat lower percentages of secondary teachers agreed, especially at the middle school level. The next evaluation question focused on professional learning and support for using Canvas and Mastery Connect. During twenty-three, twenty-four, professional learning and support for Canvas was primarily offered to teachers through self-paced resources. And assistance from school ITSs. On the survey, at least ninety-two percent of teachers indicated they participated in professional learning on Canvas. When surveyed about the effectiveness, at least eighty-six percent of secondary teachers agreed the professional learning. Provided them the necessary knowledge to use Canvas in their classroom, while sixty-six percent of elementary school teachers agreed. There were increases in agreement at all levels, most notably at the secondary levels. In addition, at least seventy-one percent of teachers agree that when there was an issue related to Canvas. Help was available, resources were provided, and there was a timely resolution. Staff were also surveyed about the professional learning and support received related to Mastery Connect, the division assessment platform. This was another area of recommendation from the Year One Implementation Evaluation. The recommendation was to ensure professional learning opportunities and support on Mastery Connect were provided for teachers to have necessary knowledge. During twenty-three, twenty-four, professional learning for teachers was primarily offered through training documents. Self-paced resources and assistance from school ITSs. The ITSs were encouraged to provide coaching, work with teachers one-on-one, and walk through the processes. Overall, at least sixty-eight percent of teachers at all levels indicated they participated in professional learning related to Mastery Connect. Regarding the effectiveness, at least sixty-nine percent of secondary teachers agreed the professional learning they received on Mastery Connect. Provided them the necessary knowledge needed for implementation, while fifty-one percent of elementary school teachers agreed. There were increases in agreement at all, all levels, most notably at the secondary levels. At least sixty-four percent of teachers agreed that when there was an issue related to Mastery Connect. Help was available, resources were provided, and there was a timely resolution. In addition, seventy-two to eighty-seven percent of teachers at all levels who used Mastery Connect indicated it was very or somewhat useful. In assessing student learning. The next focus of the evaluation was parents' access to Canvas. Since twenty-two, twenty-three, parents could access their child's course information in Canvas through their parent view account. When surveyed, from sixty-five to seventy-one percent of secondary parents indicated they accessed their child's course information in Canvas. While half of elementary school parents indicated they did. Of those who accessed their child's account, at least eighty-seven percent of parents indicated accessing the information was very or somewhat useful. And at least seventy-seven percent of parents agreed accessing Canvas helped them understand what their child was working on in school. Parent agreement regarding these items remained relatively consistent with the previous year. The first outcome goal is Canvas will promote communication and collaboration amongst teachers and between teachers and students. Related teacher and student survey data showed from eighty-two to eighty-six percent of teachers and students at the secondary levels. Agreed Canvas helped communication with one another through messaging and assignment feedback, while approximately half agreed at the elementary school level. Regarding collaboration, from sixty-three to sixty-eight percent of secondary teachers agreed Canvas helped facilitate their collaboration with other teachers. While forty-three percent of elementary school teachers agreed. The second outcome goal is Canvas will support student-centered practices that foster student agency and student engagement. Related data showed at least seventy-five percent of students at all levels agreed Canvas allowed them to make choices about their learning. And help them monitor their learning. Slightly lower percentages of students agreed Canvas helped encourage them to think creatively. In addition, from eighty-two to eighty-four percent of secondary teachers agreed Canvas helped them provide instruction using student-centered practices. While sixty-five percent of elementary school teachers agreed. When asked about their overall satisfaction with Canvas, at least eighty percent of administrators, ITSs. Students and parents at all levels indicated they were satisfied. As noted in, on the slide, there were notable increases in satisfaction for elementary school ITSs and high school students. While there was a decrease in satisfaction for elementary school administrators. The final recommendation from the Year One Evaluation focused on exploring reasons for lower satisfaction rates with Canvas. Among teachers during twenty-two, twenty-three. As shown by the figure on the slide, there were increases in satisfaction for teachers at all levels in twenty-two, twenty-three. Although satisfaction remained somewhat lower at the elementary school level. Teachers who indicated they were dissatisfied with Canvas were asked to select the reasons for their dissatisfaction. Across all levels, top reasons for dissatisfaction related to the, related to navigating the system. Moving, copying, or organizing content and Mastery Connect issues. Elementary school teachers identified additional reasons, including needing additional time to learn. And the platform being developmentally inappropriate for elementary students. Teachers were also asked the extent to which Canvas met their needs. From sixty-seven to ninety percent of teachers indicated Canvas met all or some of their needs. VDOE has offered to provide Canvas free for all school divisions. Therefore, there was no subscription fee for Canvas in twenty-three, twenty-four. Other costs related to Canvas included the subscription fee for Mastery Connect and payments to other vendors to ensure optimal functioning. Expenses not incurred by the division, or in other words, savings due to adopting Canvas totaled six hundred thousand dollars. This included the previous subscription of Schoology for students and an item bank, which is now included in the cost for Mastery Connect. Therefore, the division saved an estimated two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars by adopting Canvas last year. Based on the results of the evaluation, the first recommendation is to continue Canvas with modifications. This re-, recommendation was made within the context of VDOE continuing to fund Canvas. The second recommendation is to continue to encourage elementary school teachers in the upper grades to expose students to Canvas. To prepare for more regular use as they progress to higher grade levels. The third recommendation is to continue to encourage teachers to use Canvas for collaboration. By providing examples of how other teachers across the. by providing examples of how other teachers across the division are successfully collaborating using Canvas. The fourth recommendation is to continue to provide support to secondary classroom teachers and I T S's for issues related to the grade pass-back process between Canvas and Synergy to ensure the process is efficient and accurate for teachers. At this time, Dr. Sharon Schubridge, Director of Instructional Technology, will share the administration's response.
Good evening. Um, on behalf of the administration, we concur with the recommendations made here. We acknowledge there is going to be a difference between usage at secondary versus elementary because of the availability of seesaw for elementary students. We continue to encourage our teachers in fourth and fifth grade to leverage Canvas when appropriate to help students understand the tool before middle school. In addition, we are encouraging, we are continue, continuing to encourage teachers at all levels to close the Chromebook um, and provide more face-to-face instruction. As part of our continued professional development with instructional technology specialists, we will provide updates on the available resources in Canvas and in Course Commons, which is a place where teachers can share materials easily. And finally, as we shared last year, the Department of Technology created directions for teachers on best practices for grade pass-back. We continue to track errors and questions from school, schools. Um, we've had an average of fourteen thousand grade sinks per month since the start of school. And at this time, we are available for questions. I see, oh, there's one. Mr. Cole Pepper.
Sorry, just a second, see if I can find it on my own here. Um, so V D O eight paid for this for five years, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, what's, what's the cost of for twenty-six, twenty-seven?
I don't know that yet. Instructure, the parent company of Canvas, is currently in um, negotiations with Virtual Virginia and the Virginia Department of Education for what happens after the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So hopefully, um, prior to budget season next year, we'll know what they were able to negotiate. So we'll know at that point what our cost might be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callen.
A learning management system is what I'm taking away from this Canvas tool. Is that a correct way of defining it or describing it? It's not so much a teaching
Correct.
as much as managing what's being taught.
Correct.
Are you able to detect that as a result of the use of this tool, the student outcomes are actually improving as a result of their interaction or utilization of this tool?
Things that are improved are parent awareness of assignments. Abilities for students to quickly see if a teacher has given them feedback on an assignment. Um, quickly knowing what they got a score. If a student, when a student opens up their Canvas over on the side, it'll tell them you have these assignments due, these have been graded, you've gotten feedback from your teacher. It's a very quick way for students to be managing and tracking all of their work across classes versus I go into this room and I get information from this teacher, how does that get organized? So for students and for parents who are wanting to follow along, they can easily see in the learning management system how their student is doing. As far as the question of, can I correlate the use of a learning management system with improved grades? I don't know that I've ever looked at it that way because I don't see it as a tool for that. I see it as a tool for managing and organizing and um, communicating my learning versus the teacher giving a grade or an assessment on um, my understanding.
Another question that I had.
To your point, it's not the teacher, it's the management of my materials.
Right. On slide fourteen, you made reference to the elementary specific dissatisfaction reasons, and one of those was that it was developmentally inappropriate for students. Can you help me understand what that's communicating?
I can take that one. So at the elementary level, um, we're doing a lot in small group. Um, we're doing a lot of observation of students, they're reading to us in real time, we're monitoring their miscues. That's not something, um, but we can assess them that way. That's not something that you would then ask a teacher to put in Canvas. It would just wouldn't be appropriate for those foundational skills. They're not as independent, but we're still assessing what we're seeing.
So to speak.
Yes.
Uh, last question that I may have had was in reference to the cost and the savings screen. I think it's number fifteen. You indicated that the expenses that were not incurred, i.e. the savings that took place, were over six hundred thousand dollars. Is that something that you can quantify or give an example of? Because we use this, here's where we save money by doing or not doing the following.
Yes, so that includes the cost of the previous learning management system, Schoology, um, and an item bank that we were paying for separately. So that's six hundred, includes those two costs.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. Manning.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm, I'm really glad that one of your recommendations wasn't to switch to a new system.
Yes, yes.
And, and just, I wanna encourage my colleagues that are gonna remain on the board, but who weren't here when we switched. Um, we, we switched, I think, three times within a very short period of time. I don't remember what we had before Schoology, but we had something before Schoology, then they switched to Schoology, and then they switched to Canvas, all in a very short period of time. And it was really difficult for our employees, especially. I think the students picked up on it more quickly, but um, I just wanna encourage you, keep Canvas as long as you can, um, just so that we don't have to continue switching back and forth. Thank you.
And so I did ask Ms. Manning during the presentation, um, she just got her master's degree. Did, did you use Canvas? And she said yes. And so it, it is a natural progression to the collegiate level. It's what all the students use at, at all the universities, they're using Canvas, so they go well-prepared for that. Before I ask my question, does anybody have anything else? Um, I saw that the administrator's overall satisfaction dropped five percentage points. Do we know why that? There were a hundred and forty-eight administrators that responded. Do you know why they might?
It was only at the elementary level as well.
Oh, okay.
It was, yeah, yes. And it was, uh, it was still at eighty-three percent.
Okay.
But, um, but they didn't provide anything in the comments.
Okay, alright. Well, that, if it's elementary, then that makes sense.
It was elementary only, yes.
Okay, alright, fair enough.
Did not. Were pretty stable.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And so now we welcome, um, Joel Andrus to the podium for our legislative review, or the legislative priorities for V B C P S review. And, um, I guess I will turn to Mr. Callen so we can address his concerns first. There was no planned presentation this evening. Um, so we moved this on the agenda for Mr. Callen. So I turn to you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, items on the report are nine in number, as far as my following of the data is concerned. Uh, one of those, number nine, not necessarily in order of importance, but the one that just jumps out at me initially, it is number nine, entitled The Assessment Reform. And it talks about a reduction in S O L tests that are being mandated and my journey, which is at the two-year mark, has included lots of meetings, not only that are done internally within the school system, but those that are done and made available by the Virginia Department of Education. And a year or so ago, in my first year, there was a listening tour that was conducted by Dr. Lisa Coons. And if I remember correctly, this one in particular was held at Indian River High School. And after the presentation took place, there was an opportunity for Q and A. And I raised my hand and stood up and mentioned that I was new and drinking out of seventeen fire hoses and trying to make sense of all this stuff. But I was trying to get a North Star reference point, if you will, in order to determine what should I be focusing on. I hear about S O Ls, I hear about accreditation, I hear about a number of different things, and the N A P score was another example of something to, the attention that you can be distracted by in the marketplace is unlimited. But my question to her was, of all these various reference points that clamor for your attention in the marketplace, what should I, as a school board member, be focusing on? And her response, after pausing for a reflection for a minute or two, was S O Ls. That's what we need to focus on, S O Ls for that moment in time. Now, I know a lot has changed since then as well. But when I see as an example that one of the things that's suggested here is reduce the number of S O Ls, well, it causes the alarms to go off in my head in reference to that meeting with Dr. Coons, and just say, okay, help me understand. Uh, that's one example. And before I finish, another example that comes to mind is also in reference to the new assessment system that's being introduced by the Department of Education in the state of Virginia. And it seems to be saying that may not be the way we wanna go right now. So these represented examples of, these are significant, significant topics. And one of the things that I love to experience in order to gain a deeper understanding is to hear from Party A relative to the pros and cons of a particular issue, but then wish that I could hear from Party B who says, no, I, I don't see it that way at all, and here are some things to take into consideration in order to frame your total picture of understanding, from which you can then make an intelligent decision. That's why I raised my hand. It did something I've never done before, as I said, going where no man has gone before. Um, that was the reason behind the request. I just felt like for such significant issues, I was not ready to make decisions on it. I needed to gather a deeper understanding, and if you represent one side of the coin, is there anybody else we can hear from that represents another side of the coin in order to get a balanced perspective before a final decision can be made? Other than that, I have nothing to talk about.
Um, uh, Mr. Callen, and I, there are experts in this room who have worked uh, very intimately and deeply with the S O Ls, and so I, I don't wanna steal their thunder, but I'm sure they can address a lot of your concerns and, and questions. Um, I would talk really just at a, a very high level and then, you know, probably defer to them, if that's okay. The S O Ls, and this is language in our legislative packets that we've been talking about for, for a long time now in terms of just assessment reform. And I think one of the challenges that we have seen over the years with assessment reforms is that the S O Ls that were developed a very long time ago were designed to do one thing, which is, which is sort of like a benchmark for where the students are. And over the years, the uses of those numbers have expanded well beyond what the scope of those assessments were really ever intended to demonstrate. And so what we want to make sure is that the assessments that we are giving our students gives us the data that we need and is being used in a way that is most meaningful to our teachers, to our administrators, to you all, to the community, to parents. And I think that's what we're really trying to accomplish in what our language is. And when we talk about the reduction in the S O Ls, you know, we, there are a lot of S O Ls that our students are required to take. There's also lots of other end-of-year assessments that our students are required to take, and I think there's been a, um, a general consensus that there's, there's, there's a lot on them at the end of the year, and reducing some of those burdens, you know, it might, might be in, in their best interest. And I'll, so that's, that's where that came from. In terms of like the growth assessments, um, you know, there was legislation put in place a couple of years ago that, um, required three-year growth assessments. So students have to take a middle year, and this is for third grade, middle year. I'm sorry, big, beginning of the year, middle year, and the end of the year. And this is something that we supported because we really wanted that data for how our students were tracking over the course of the year. Um, well, and, and, um, unfortunately, in, in sometimes typical Richmond fashion, what was, then came down from the Department of Education was a very onerous system that, that put more assessments on our students and then did not give us the data that we are actually looking to accomplish. And so those are the types of things that I think that we want to get out of the S O Ls assessments. And, uh, we, I do know for a fact that there will be legislation this, introduced this session. I'm not seeing final versions. I've been involved with some preliminary discussions about what does S O L reform look like? And that is primarily driven, you know, a lot of process reform. I think there's gonna be another effort that is going to be separate about how many S O Ls do we really need? And for example, there's two S O Ls, and again, I'm gonna get in, um, over my head here very quickly, so my phone to friend. There are two S O Ls in particular that, um, are required, and I believe it is chemistry and world history, but are not used for verified credits. And so the question is, why are you doing, you know, these two assessments as S O Ls if they're not also used for verified credits? So I think the point is, we need to look at this system from a comprehensive standpoint, making sure that our S O Ls are accomplishing what we need to accomplish. We're getting the data that we need from our students. We're making sure that they are progressing, learning things that we need to learn, but in doing a way that makes sense for everyone. So I, I, that's kind of a long-winded answer, and I'm sure there's others here who can probably answer some of those specifics.
I, I can add some stuff. Uh, I think the bottom line is, Mr. Callen, assessment reform at the state level was, is something that continues to come up year over year over year. Uh, we've got a number of your colleagues who've been in this, on this board for a long time, and assessment reform is not new. Um, the first time assessment reform came around, it was, it's no longer what you know, it's what you can do with what you know. And so is the typical multiple-choice assessment still appropriate? Shouldn't we go to a performance assessment where you demonstrate how you can apply the learning that you have? Well, a multiple-choice assessment lends itself easily to scoring. A performance assessment is difficult to score. It requires additional time and training. So we've been slow to introduce performance assessment. At times over the past ten years, we've added assessments, we've subtracted assessments, we've tried to get aligned to the, the U S Department of Education, we've tried to not be aligned with the U S Department of Education. So I think this is just a nod to, we still haven't found the sweet spot. And it will be driven by the Department of Education and the groups that they put together to study this. And I think that's what is really trying to be captured in this legislative agenda, is that we still don't think we've found the sweet spot. We're not sure what it is, but it, it's still, um, kind of ma- requires a more, a closer look. You can see in the school performance, uh, framework, they're trying to, they being the Department of Education, they're trying to make sure that the accountability accreditation system used by the U A- United States Department of Education right now is in line with what we do, so it's not, and again, board members, you remember, two playing fields, right? We gotta make accreditation over here, state, then we gotta make accountability over here with the federal government. They're trying to get those things in line, which is a great idea, by the way. Um, and I think that, that kind of plays into this assessment reform idea. And my final comment would be, um, I was engaged in a conversation in the beginning of the year with, uh, the Board President, Grace Creasy, the Deputy Secretary of Education, around flexible seat time, recognizing that for career readiness, we need our kids to have the ability to participate in meaningful internships and apprenticeships, which likely may occur during a school day. How can we create those opportunities through a flexible seat time agreement where those students can get credit for those type of courses? And there is a bill being pushed through, uh, on that right now that we hope was gonna pass, uh, which will really accelerate, al- already accelerated process for career exposure. So that's a long response.
And, and Mr. Cotton, I, I can make one more quick comment too, just, um, currently, there's a contract that the state has with, with Pearson, who does all the S O L testing. That contract has to get renewed. The Department of Education is requesting money right now from the governor's office and ultimately from the General Assembly to have that, have additional money to rethink the S O Ls regardless. You know, that's already kind of on the table. The question is, what does it become? The General Assembly has not yet signed off on those dollars. It, it is a fairly significant amount of money. But this is something that will definitely be moving forward and within, if not this session, certainly the session after, because they have to deal with this sort of contract issue that is outstanding currently.
Another question, and I don't know who this should be directed to, so I'll just direct it to everyone in the room. This may be totally out of the box and, uh, inappropriate to even ask, but I'll ask it nonetheless. Would it be possible to have a representative from the Virginia Department of Education come and speak to us about various things, such as these new assessments that are being released? So that if we're going to get to a place where we have to make a decision and vote on it, which I assume would be something we might have to do, we would be hearing, so to speak, from the people who are involved in actually constructing and building this mousetrap. and building this mousetrap, so to speak? So I offer that just as a thought, and it may be inappropriate, but it's what comes to mind.
No, I don't think inappropriate at all, and I think that's something that we can certainly arrange. There's been a number of work groups. One most recently called the Five Eight Five Work Group. He was named after a house called Five Eight Five, very ingenious name. And they did a very comprehensive study of what does SOLs, what should they look like? And so I think we could certainly have someone, people who are involved with that work, maybe come down and maybe at information or wherever you feel would be appropriate to talk about some of that work that's been done.
All right. Dr. Robertson, we'll chat later about that. Okay. Ms. Manning?
Very good summary of all of that, by the way. Did a really good job. And I do support assessment reform. I think it's important, but I also very much think that we have to have accountability and the state has to have accountability to make sure that school districts are doing what they're supposed to be doing in educating students at a rigorous level. And we were at a conference, a School Board Member Alliance conference, and Secretary Gudere was there. And she really wanted to get feedback on this topic from the board members. And one board member, who is a former teacher, stood up and said, we need to do something about SOLs. It's not a great measure of students across the board. And he suggested going back to exams. He got a round of applause for that, classroom exams. But I know the secretary was very interested in getting our feedback about what we see and what we think is needed. My concern here with this last one is regarding growth measures. Because I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that growth measures were taken out of the accreditation measurement because they felt that maybe it wasn't, maybe it was lowering standards a little bit and not really truly measuring student academic achievement. Is that true or?
No, you still have growth. You have mastery, which accounts for a higher percentage than growth, but growth is still factored in.
Okay, okay. So this mentioning, in addition to student growth measures, VPC, CPS supports these other measures. The growth is already something that's in there in the credit. Okay.
Ms. Manning, if I might offer one other thing on that. That language, as I mentioned specifically through those three-year growth assessments, this passed General Assembly, they passed legislation that delayed the implementation of the DOE growth assessments, but they will still be coming online. We'll still have to do them. So I think what we also want to make sure is when those growth assessments come back online, that they are useful tools for us and not just a burden for our teachers and for our students.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cole Pepper?
Well, I think that answered, that answered at least part of my question, which was, which is that mastery is still a thing we're trying to get a good measure of. I'm trying to summarize how this kind of, how I took this in the first time I read it, which I think is more along the lines of, a lot of folks have complaints with the SOLs. Either they're burdensome on the students and/or they actually, don't actually give us what we want in terms of data that really measures. But I think we all realize that, like you said before, right, it's still a common benchmark across the state at least. So the state can look at that and go, well, it may be a good test, it may be a bad test, but at least it gives us a baseline of information about what's going on across the state. Our concern is, does it tell us anything about what's going on in our schools? So my, I guess my take on the way this is written is what we're asking is the state to give us some leeway in how we collect, how we test and therefore collect the information that we want, while the state still has an opportunity to get what it wants out of it. Is that a fair assessment of what we're trying to get out of this?
I think that's a great summary of 10 years of discussion of this.
So my question then for Mr. Callen is, are you satisfied enough that I could entertain a motion to move the legislative agenda from information to action? So I just need direction on how to proceed because we have a legislative breakfast with our legislators on Friday, and we have to at least signal to our legislators through our lobbyist here what our priorities are, so he can lobby on behalf of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Mrs. Franklin?
I would like to go ahead and propose that motion to move this from information to action. So that we can be prepared for Friday and be able to set forth a direction for our legislative agenda.
All right. This motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Riggs. All right, I still see some discussion in the queue, so Ms. Owens.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Franklin, for making the motion. I would like for us to stay and talk about it as long as it needs to be talked about so that a vote can occur and that our district can have a legislative plan to go forward. I understand that some of the information is complex. The SOL question that you had certainly is one that has been a discussion legislatively and amongst this board and across the state, as Joel was mentioning, for probably a decade now. And I would be really disappointed if our district has to miss out on having that advocacy because those questions weren't brought forward before right now. Dr. Robertson had great input. It could have been received prior to right now so that we would be ready to vote. And I just think it's completely unfair to our administrators, to our staff, to our students, to miss that opportunity this year. But we've been here until 2:00 in the morning before. Let's get the answers that we need to be able to make an informed vote. And so I appreciate the motion, and I think that's our responsibility as elected officials. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
So I do think it is possible for us to still have a legislative agenda and potentially remove the part that has some questions. But I do have a question for Ms. Lanetti because we adopted the agenda with this now on information. How many votes does this now require in order to pass in action?
It should be just the majority for an agenda change. You can move it.
So it's still changing the agenda? Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, the General Assembly does go into session January 8th. And so I do, I agree with Mr. Callen. And I also, I think that my support is going to be for removing that one item and then having the other eight to still have you advocate for in the General Assembly. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, so you mentioned something that now sounds like a substitute motion. And so I need clarification on that because there is a motion on the floor to vote on this agenda, I mean, to move it from information to action. But you've just mentioned removing something from the legislative agenda. Do you want?
I will make that motion when this is up for action.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify. Mr. Cole Pepper?
Well, I was basically going to kind of say that too, which is, we have a couple of choices here. One, which is to remove this item and move the rest of it forward because this is the only one that came up. But I also wanted to say that I, Ms. Callen, I talked about this beforehand, and I appreciate his concern. It sounded to me like I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mike. So if I say it wrong, please correct me. But I think his primary concern was, we're coming off the mark in terms of ensuring that we're testing to a high level of performance, to a master level of performance. I think in our discussion here, two things. One, I don't think that's the case. I've gotten warm fuzzy that that's not the case from both, both the heads are nodding at me. And two, the way this is written is really just the beginning of a discussion with legislators. This is not an answer to anything. This is not what a law would look like. This is not how we would implement anything. This is merely a discussion that says, what we have right now isn't quite right. It's not doing what you want, it's not doing what we want, and we need to talk about it so we can change it. And I really think that's all this is saying. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth dropping it off, what we discuss with our legislatures.
Ms. Anderson?
I'm in favor of bringing this back up for action because, as you said, we are having a legislative breakfast, and we're going to be talking to legislators this Friday. We need to have a vote on this before that. But I want to suggest for in the future, for the legislative committee, that from now on, take this as a lesson that the legislative committee needs to meet soon. Don't put it off until late fall to start meeting. And I know that there were some, there were some problems with people trying, being able to get together. And of course, we lost a person who was part of the legislative committee. And so that happened. I mean, a lot of things happened, but if you start meeting earlier, like in July and August, and, you know, that committee can give an update to the board regularly. Because these kind of questions about something like this that's so important, and then asking for it to come off of our legislative agenda because you're unsure about it. You know, this is not criticizing Mr. Callen, but, you know, basically, these types of questions could have been asked much sooner and waiting till tonight is just the wrong time to ask it. We're ready to vote on this tonight, but please, from now on, the legislative committee needs to start meeting sooner and then give updates to the board regularly on what's happening so that people can have their questions answered. Thank you.
So I, am I right in assuming that all of the school divisions across the Commonwealth probably have SOL reform on their legislative agenda?
I would say a lot of school divisions have been very focused on SOL reform. And as it's continued to grow as an issue over the last year, 18 months, and certainly starting earlier this spring, it is risen in kind of priority.
So not an anomaly that it's on ours. It always has been as long as I've been. Okay, so I see no further discussion. So the motion again is to move the legislative agenda from information to action. The voting board is open. So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes, so that motion did pass. Okay, and now we move on to the consent agenda. And tonight, we have six resolutions. National Mentoring Month, resolutions for board members, Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Owens, and Ms. Riggs. Any objections to moving forward with these? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Ms. Riggs and seconded by Mr. Callen. And we'll start this evening with National Mentoring Month. Ms. Franklin? Oh, Dr. Green?
Thank you. Whereas January 2025 will mark the 23rd anniversary of National Mentoring Month, an opportunity to focus attention on the need for mentors as well as how each of us can work together to increase the number of mentors to help ensure positive outcomes for our young people. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools honors volunteer mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to help them thrive. And whereas mentoring programs make our communities and our school division stronger by driving impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks for adults. And whereas mentoring plays a pivotal role in career exploration and supports workplace skills by helping young people set career goals, equipping mentors, and the skills needed to support the professional growth of young people and driving positive outcomes for young people and businesses. And whereas the annual African-American Male Summit on January 25th, 2025, hosted by Green Run High School, is an example of mentorship that promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and growth of our young men and their relationships with adults, both in our division and throughout the community. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach officially recognizes the month of January 2025 as National Mentoring Month. And be it further resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach encourage citizens to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the board, adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 10th day of December 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And now we'll proceed with resolutions for our outgoing school board members. So when it is your turn, if you would please get up from your seats and go down in front of the dais, please. We have a resolution for each of you and a gift. And so, Ms. Anderson, you're first. Dr. Robertson, would you like to join them down there? Okay.
Resolution for Beverly M. Anderson, School Board Member at Large. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students. School board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world and work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Beverly M. Anderson has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as a school board member from January 1st, 2013 through December 31st, 2024. Ms. Anderson served as school board chair from January 1st, 2017 through December 2019. And whereas prior to her career tenure as a school board member, Ms. Anderson served a 30-year career as a public school teacher, which allowed her to bring unique perspectives to her work on the school board and her advocacy for educators and military-connected families. And whereas Ms. Anderson represented the school board on numerous committees and boards, including governance, policy review, planning and performance monitoring, building utilization, student discipline, and Virginia Beach Sister Cities. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Beverly M. Anderson, School Board Member at Large, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this school board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Beverly M. Anderson, School Board Member at Large, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this 10th day of December 2024.
Do you want to, you can say something now.
I'd like to thank the community of Virginia Beach for electing me three times to this board. My time on the board has been both rewarding and challenging, but most of all, it was an honor to serve. I want to go back to my main reason for running to begin with. Bringing a classroom teacher's perspective to the board. I felt that was important. Showing respect for a teacher's input to the board. Teacher pay, which we've made some strides forward on that, but we still have a long way to go. And my big, big thing that I really started working on was full-day kindergarten. As a kindergarten teacher for 27 of my 36 years, I knew that we needed full-day kindergarten. Because when I started on this board, there were only 11 schools out of 56 that had full-day kindergarten. And I knew that wasn't right. It wasn't right for the children. It wasn't right for the community, and I knew that we needed to do something. So I started working on it, and it took some time. I had to convince some of my colleagues who did not believe it was necessary. And finally, after convincing my colleagues, and we finally got the majority that we voted in favor of doing that, then we had to convince city council. And that wasn't easy either because it took money. And, you know, as you know, city council is where we get our money. Well, they control how much money we get most of the time. Finally, we achieved it though. Finally, we achieved, achieved it though. Gradually, we implemented it. It took a few years, but after four years of implementation, we finally, finally reached full-day kindergarten for all elementary schools in Virginia Beach. And I do feel like that's an accomplishment that we've had, we've made. I have some advice for the incoming board members. Visit schools, visit them often, and interact with staff. One of the most valuable experiences I've had was just recently when I sat in on professional learning community at a couple of the, of the schools that I've visited. And prof, PLCs is what they're called. They're different now than when I was teaching. They've actually, um, improved quite a bit. But when you sit on a BL, PLC meeting, you get a deeper understanding of the collaboration taking place with the teachers. Listening to their ideas is very important and understanding that they need time to plan, but they also need time to do so collaboratively with their peers. It, it, it was a very valuable experience and I encourage all new board members, in fact, all mo, all board members to go sit on some of those PLC meetings. And when you set up your times to go visit, you need to let the principal know that you'd like to sit in on a PLC meeting and, and monitor it or listen to it. To my colleagues and new board members, you have some very challenging times ahead. They're all tied to respect for employees and money, money. Teacher retention, know that teachers need to know that they, that, that you respect them and understand that they need time. It's paramount, paramount to keeping teachers in our system. Teacher pay, obviously, that's, that's a challenge. We need competitive pay. We tried to do something last year. And, um, we didn't achieve what we wanted. We wanted to become number one in the region and now we're still, we're one of the lowest in the region because everybody else also gave lar, large raises. And building new schools. So what I say to you is, don't be afraid to ask the public to fund new schools and pay your teachers with competitive pay. Don't be afraid of that. Because the community in Virginia Beach expects world-class education for their students. And they will support building schools. They will support paying our teachers the right way. They'll support that if you ask. But we learned our lesson a few years ago when we found out city ca, we said to c, city council, you gave employ, your employees a larger raise than we gave our teachers. Why was that? And what we were told was, well, you didn't ask. Don't be caught in that. Don't be caught in that. Don't be afraid to ask. Yes, I know that if we ask for more money than what our revenue sharing formula says we're supposed to be getting, I know that, that we're supposed to also ask for, um, city council to do a raise in taxes. But you know, if you don't ask, you won't know. And need to ask for that. We also need you to, I'm going to do this. I'm going to be lobbying Richmond to get Richmond to pay more for building, we need to come up with a solution to build schools. That's very important because we, if we, and we need to ask there as well. If we don't ask, we don't know. But anyway, I want to say good luck to all of you. And remember that listening and respecting ideas of your colleagues are important because collaboration and discussions are needed to be effective as a functioning board. After all, without that, we would never have achieved full-day kindergarten for all children of Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Franklin. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually, continually strives to chart the course for our students. School Board members have a vital role in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world and work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Jennifer S. Franklin has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as School Board Member District Two, Kempsville, from January first, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Franklin served as the Vice Chair of the School Board from January to December of this year. And whereas a, a School Board Member, Ms. Franklin brought her unique perspective as a former military member and private business professional to her service on the School Board. Ms. Franklin has consistently championed for the rights of students, the importance of trade and alternative education programs, as well as military service. And whereas Ms. Franklin represented the School Board on numerous committees and boards, including audit, gifted advisory, the Green Run Collegiate Board, and student discipline. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Jennifer S. Franklin, School Board Member District Two, Kempsville, for a job well done. And be it further ado, resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Jennifer S. Franklin, School Board Member District Two, Kempsville, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this tenth day of December twenty twenty-four. Would you like to say something?
Well, first of all, I just want to say, what a great honor it has been to serve this amazing division. Um, you know, I started with my love of this division through my PTSA work, um, starting when my daughter was in kindergarten. And I would just like to say that I still am so in awe of how, um, how great this, this division is. Um, even just as a parent, as a PTSA member, you just have no idea how dedicated and committed our employees are to doing great work in this division. And I so hope that the community recognizes and continues to support this division the way it needs to. In order to, like, like Ms. Anderson said, um, we are top-notch. We're world-class. We are preparing our kids to enlist, enroll, and employ. And we are doing great things. So please, just, I, I would just beg the, the the new board, the, um, the community, let's remain positive and work together and collaborate so that we can continue doing great work for these students and this community. So again, I just thank you all. I thank you, the staff, um, so much for all of your work. I know we probably drive you insane, but, but, um, we just very, very much appreciate you. And I just want to just thank you again for all of your hard work.
It is now my honor and pleasure to read this resolution for my good friend Vicki Manning. I've seen a lot of, um, board members come and go, and I've never served along someone so dedicated, so well-prepared, um, so willing to ask tough, tough, tough questions and so focused on student leadership. And for that, Vicki, I thank you tremendously. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students. School Board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world and work tirelessly to address these needs. And whereas Victoria C. Manning has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as School Board Member from January first, two thousand seventeen, through D, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And whereas throughout her tenure on the School Board, Mrs. Manning has been a tireless advocate for student excellence, respect for parental rights, responsible business practices, and compliance with law and regulation. And whereas Ms. Manning has served on many school board committees such as student discipline, policy review, legislative, school health advi, advisory board, and long-range facilities planning. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Victoria C. Manning, School Board Member at Large, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Victoria C. Manning, School Board Member at Large, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this tenth day of December, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, Ms. Owens. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Manning, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have any prepared remarks, but I just want to thank my school board colleagues, especially my friend Carolyn Weems, who got me into this about ten years ago. Um, I didn't know what I was getting into then. Um, but I got involved because I was a concerned parent and, um, I always have the mantra, if you're going to complain about something, do something about it. And so that put me here on the board and um, I'm thankful to the friends that I've made on the board up here, um, lifelong friendships for sure. And I want to thank Dr. Robertson. Very happy to have you in the position of, of superintendent. Please continue to raise the bar for our students. I appreciate that. Um, Ms. Lynetti, you've been an amazing attorney and you might be one of the hardest-working people I know. Thank you for all that you've done. And Ms. Toni Otto, um, you jumped in in a, in a tough time on the board and, and you, you've done a lot. And I, I really appreciate all that you've done for the board. So thank you all.
Okay, now Ms. Owens. Hard to believe I've known Ms. Owens since she was sixteen years old. Two years. Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students. School Board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world and work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Jessica L. Owens has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as School Board Member District Three, Rose Hall, from May twenty nineteen through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas as a School Board Member, Ms. Owens brought her unique perspective as a social work and child protective services professional to her service on the School Board. Ms. Owens has consistently championed to the mel, mental health, parenting, and social needs for students and their families. And whereas Ms. Owens represented the School Board on numerous committees and boards, including audit, governance, policy review, superintendent's mental health, Equity Council, and student discipline. And now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Jessica L. Owens, School Board Member District Three, Rose Hall, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Jessica, Jessica L. Owens, School Board Member District Three, Rose Hall, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this tenth day of December, twenty twenty-four.
I will keep it brief. Thank you. I just, I want to say thank you to the staff, the community, uh, the amazing people that I have met along the way on this journey that I was reluctant to kind of stumble into, uh, but no regrets. It's been, uh, an amazing experience and I've been so proud of our district and the progress that we've made, even on the short time that I've been on the board. Uh, one of my very first asks of, uh, Dr. Spence when he was here was can we do a mental health task force? And putting Bobby Jamison in a role where he could, uh, collaborate has been amazing to see that growth and what it's offered for, uh, our students, our division. Um, I hope that our, our new board members will, uh, strive to amplify voices of our community, whether it's, uh, student voices, which I didn't mind the pushback of having student speakers be able to kind of move forward to amplify their voices, uh, whether it's community voices. I also got some pushback and some eh, from agreeing to continue to have our speakers livestreamed, all of them, and, uh, not to cut back their time more than it needed to be, only to allow more speakers to be able to speak. And to amplify the voices of parents and staff members who prior to twenty nineteen, I don't think, had nearly the amount of contact that they now do directly with the, the School Board. They feel empowered to reach out and speak and to communicate as they should. Um, and so I hope that they'll continue to feel that way. And I also hope that our new board members and our continuing ones will continue to seek out the unintended consequences before we make a vote. I appreciate Mr. Callen saying, I want to hear the other viewpoints. Seek it out and seek out from our administrators and our parents what things we may not have thought of that may result from some of the decisions that we're making. So that's all I have, but thank you all.
Okay, and last, Ms. Riggs and my sorority sister. Yeah, I see, yes.
Whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools, in partnership with the entire community, will empower every student to become a lifelong learner who is a responsible, productive, and engaged citizen within the global community. And whereas through the governance and oversight of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and the leadership of the superintendent and staff, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is a world-class school division that continually strives to chart the course for our students. School Board members have vital roles in preparing Virginia Beach City Public School students to be future leaders in our community and the world and work tirelessly to address those needs. And whereas Ternace B. Riggs has served with high distinction and outstanding dedication on the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, as School Board Member District One, Centerville, from January first, twenty seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Ms. Riggs served as School Board Chair from January first, twenty twenty-three, through December twenty twenty-three. Where, and whereas prior to her tenure as a School Board Member, Ms. Riggs served a thirty-year career as a public school teacher and then served as the president of the Virginia Beach Education Association. Ms. Riggs used her professional teaching experience to advocate for the rights of school employees and to ensure that students received excellent educational experiences. And whereas Ms. Riggs represented the School Board on numerous committees and boards, including audit, governance, policy review, legislative, student discipline, Virginia School Board Association Delegate, and Virginia Beach Sister Cities Association. And now therefore let it be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach commends and extends its grateful appreciation to Ternace B. Riggs, School Board Member District One, Centerville, for a job well done. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this School Board. And be it finally resolved that this original resolution be presented to Ternace B. Riggs, School Board Member District One, Centerville, in recognition of her service. This resolution is to be adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach this tenth day of December, twenty twenty-four.
That's okay. Well, well, is that in the frame too? Okay. We'll get that fixed.
You know, I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make this short and sweet because I didn't prepare anything and I don't want to keep anybody here any longer than you have to be. I just wa, want to thank everybody for having the appreciation to have me up here and serve our students. Serving them for thirty-seven years in the school system. I feel like I was, well, I was born and raised here and, and have lived in the school system for all my life. Uh, close to almost fifty years in public education. And, um, it is so rewarding to be a part of the governing body and to make sure our employees and our students and our community gets the things that they need to have to be the world-class school division and the world-class city to live in.
And I thank you for um, letting me be able to serve up here. It's been an honor, it always will be. And um, I hope that everybody does as well and continues to do all the great things that this School Board has done because you have done some great things. And our administrators, it's, I knew we were a good school system, but being able to come and see all the things and see what you guys do. You are the hardest working group of people that I could ever want to know. And I, as a teacher, you hear all kinds of mumbles about administrators and what do they do. It really shows a different appreciation to come in and see what you guys do. And um, I so appreciate all, all of what you do. You are what helps to make this school system the world-class school system. And uh, thank you. Thank you for letting me be up here to serve all of you. It's been an honor.
Okay, so um, the motion originally was made by Ms. Riggs and seconded by Mi- Mike, Mr. Callen and the voting board is open. The resolutions, the consent agenda.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass for the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on to action. Uh, we will begin with our personnel report and administrative appointments, Dr. Robertson.
Uh, Madam Chair, we need to get a motion and a second first to vote on the-
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't start that way. All right, first I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by, no, motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Brown. Dr. Robertson.
Any discussion? And then we have to vote.
I didn't know if you had, oh, okay, I'm sorry, what? Good morning. Any discussion? Voting board is open. Okay, Dr. Robertson.
Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass for the personnel reported administrative appointment.
I'm gonna do really well on number two, Dr. Robertson.
Okay, so we do have one appointment tonight, this person's very familiar to you. Uh, Casey Conger, uh, who formerly was a principal for us at W.T. Cook Elementary and also Creed's Elementary, found that she just could not stay away from the principalship, she just missed it so much. And we're pleased that you've approved our recommendation for her to go back to Creed's Elementary School as the principal at the, uh, yes, thank you.
Dr. Robertson, when, when I saw that come through, I called Casey right away and I said, what? And she said, it is truly, my heart is truly in a school building. And I believe that, she's a rock star. And make sure board, and board members, eh, give her about two weeks, she'll know every name of every student at Creed's Elementary, I promise you, and in two we, ju- in just a few weeks. Go visit her out there, she's a rock star. All right, item two, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, is this the part? I'll entertain a motion to, to approve Policy five dash five-two, cellphone-free education, cellular phones, and personal electronic communication device student use. Uh, motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Anderson, Mrs. Lynetti.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Cammy Lynetti, back on for the Policy Review Committee for action tonight. We have two po- one policy, the Supporting Regulation, and the final policy, three sixty-five, would need to be repealed if you approve five fifty-two because we don't want, want, want two competing policies. So the first one is five fifty-two, which is the cellphone policy you looked at last meeting. And I'm trying to think, I don't think we made any significant changes here, but this would come back up as the overriding policy under section five, which is a student matter. So that right now would be up for your consideration.
Okay, so to clarify, we are voting on what?
Right now, you're gonna vote on cellphone-free five fifty-two, which is the policy. You asked last time to be able to vote on the resolution, again, allowable under your bylaws, not typically done. So, yeah, I'm sorry, regulation. So you're gonna do five fifty-two first, which is overriding policy, and then you'll move on to regulation five fifty-two point one, which is the Supporting Regulation.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Woodhouse is putting out, we took out the, the last line that we didn't want out, so that from last time in there. And I'm not sure if I have the draft with me at the moment.
What, still, I still need clarification, and I'm sure others do too, like- I know it's B-one. I, that's what, that's what I want to make sure people understand.
Yeah, we're not doing them as a group, we, we, we're gonna break them out individually. You're gonna do, you're looking at the policy first, which you don't, you've never had this policy before. Essentially, it becomes a replacement policy for three sixty-five. It is your overriding policy, your philosophy on cellphones.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to refer to the Chair of the Policy Review Committee to tell us exactly what we're voting on. Because there's two votes tonight. Is this the first one?
So I believe we actually have three votes um, as it pertains to the cellphones. So the one is the, the Policy five dash five-two, and that is what we are voting on right now. Um, the next vote is the Regulation five dash five-two point one. And then the last one will be Policy um, three dash six-five, which is a deletion. So right now, we are just voting on that uh, Policy um, five dash five-two.
Would it help if I read it, Madam Chair? Okay, as it's currently proposed to read, the title would be cellphone-free education, cellular phones, and personal electronic communication devices student use. Student use of cellular phones, parentheses, cellphones, end parentheses, and personal electronic communication devices during the school day is disruptive to the educational environment, not conducive to productive learning experiences, and often the source of disciplinary incidences. Extensive social media usage and widespread cellphone possession by children is closely related to mental health and chronic health conditions that are adversely affecting students. The School Board authorizes the superintendent designees to develop regulations and procedures concerning possession and use of cellphones and personal electronic communication devices by students during the school day while traveling to and from school, and while students are participating in school-sponsored activities.
Okay, everybody good? Any discussion? Okay, just what she read. Everybody good? All right, the motion was made by, oh, Ms. Owens.
I just wanted to uh, kind of point out, this is how PRC uh, approved unanimously for this policy. It does speak in the policy, like, like most of our policies, that we authorize the superintendent to design and uh, or designate, develop regulations and procedures. Um, but yet we do have the regulation uh, for the board to vote on. And so um, I, I just want to, I guess, point out that while it's authorizing the superintendent, it is at least inferred that changes to this regulation are going to have some discussion with the board, which is why we brought the regulation-
Okay.
-to be voted on.
All right, that's fair, that's good. And I think as a board member, I always appreciate um, the information from led, the uh, Policy Committee and how it came out of that committee. And I always appreciate um, yeah, hearing how you work together to, to come up with that. And so um, any further discussion? All right, the voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, so the motion did pass for Policy five dash five-two.
Okay, moving on to item two is Regulation five dash five-two point one, cellular phones and personal electronic communication devices limitation on use. Ms. Lynetti.
Again, normally you don't-
Oh, I need a motion, please. Motion made by Ms. Mo- Owens, seconded by Ms. Riggs, Ms. Lynetti.
Again, normally the School Board doesn't get into regulations, but again, your bylaws authorize you to do that. You felt it was important based on the conversation at the last School Board meeting to actually look at this particular regulation. Significant in this regulation is the exceptions under the definitions, which is A two under instructional time, which will read as means any structured or unstructured learning experiences that occur from when the first bell rings at the start of the school day and to the dismissal bell at the end of the school day. Lunchtimes for elementary and middle school students, bathroom breaks, travel time between locations and during class periods, and time between class periods are included in the definition of instructional time. And again, that is different from the model policies proposed by the Virginia Department of Education. If you flip over to section C, which is um, what we amended after the, the PRC meeting, it would read C as student use of personal electronic communication devices, non-instructional time, high school lunchtime, or special events. One, signs middle high school students may use such devices before or after instructional time. High school students under two may use personal electronic communication devices during their designated lunch period, and the rest goes on to explain buses and off-site events. Number two is a significant change here. So this is the section where you've now added high school can use it during lunchtime. The rest of the sections are the standard information, a lot of it coming from the um, model policies moving to the Department of Education. I don't know if you want me to go through any of those, but almost all those are developed based on what the model policies had. So your two significant areas that you have deviated from the suggested policies would be an A two under definitions and C two for the high school lunch period. So those are how it came out of PRC, and that's what we discussed last time.
Ms. Weems.
And yes, I'd like to make a substitute motion, colleagues, I have um, given you that this afternoon. After a lot of discussion two weeks ago, there were several of us that had concerns with this. So the changes are um, in the definitions, A, number two, instructional time, as you, as you see the highlighted yellow that I gave you, I've changed it to lunchtimes for elementary, middle, and high school students. So I have added high school students in that section. Um, on the next page with C, I have taken off high school lunchtime. So if you see on my um, page, student use of personal electronic communication devices, non-instructional time, or special events, I have taken out the lunchtime. And therefore I have omitted number two because that's the one that says high school students may use um, personal electronic communication devices during their lunch. So basically, this amendment would make cell-free, um, a cell-free um, environment from bell, beginning bell to ending bell. So I, my move that um, we adopt the um, Regulation five dash five-two point one as amended.
Okay, did you get that? Okay, so the first thing that she's doing is she is adding- Okay, she's gonna hand it to you. So for the record-
Essentially taking out the high school lunches.
She's taken out- She's taking out high school lunch.
There were no other changes to what's in the agenda package?
Yeah, it's basically just taking out high school lunch, and that's the discussion that we had two weeks ago. And I understand it's kind of a philosophical disagreement or agreement, but um, I felt passionate about with, with all the data that we have about cellphones and all that. I felt, I felt like this was, was necessary for me to bring forward and offer this amendment. Thank you very much.
It's already been seconded? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We, our substitute motion was made by Ms. Weems, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Ms. Manning, then Ms. Anderson.
Yeah, so when we were having the discussion, um, hashing this out in PRC, um, I, I had suggested that we do bell-to-bell, including lunch, but that we have just a short period of time during this, during the school day for students in the high school to be able to, to text their parents, you know, to use the phone for five or ten minutes. Um, that didn't seem to be supported among my colleagues on, on the PRC and administration had a little bit of heartburn on that. They felt, felt that it was gonna be a little bit too hard to kind of monitor it. It was either like do all of lunch or none of lunch. Um, so I kind of sided with the, the full lunchtime in PRC. And since we, since we met in PRC, I have done some research and tried to reach out to some school divisions who've, who've done this for a long time. And I recently spoke with the Superintendent of Louisa County, and they have implemented a bell-to-bell cellphone-free schedule back in, in two thousand eight. They've been doing it since two thousand eight. And they don't allow it at lunch, and they said it has been a smashing success. Um, the superintendent that I spoke to was actually a principal in one of the high schools when they implemented it. And so he was a part of the process of implementation. And he said that they went from, within two years, they went from having ninety-seven fights a year to having two. And that just really stood out to me because we see on discipline committees up here how, you know, students get their phones and they go and plan things um, during the school day. And, and that's always been a concern of mine regarding the cellphones. And um, and so I just, I wanted to share that because I, he also emphasized um, the satisfaction that he gets when he visits a school and he sees students talking to one another at lunchtime. Um, he said it's amazing. And he said that, yeah, it was, it was a little difficult in the, in the first year or so to implement it, but he said consistency was key. Everybody has to be on board and you have to have firm guidelines around it. And he said he'd be happy to talk to you, Dr. Robertson, about um, how he, how he did all of that. So um, I just wanted to share that because I have kind of gone back and forth a little bit on the lunchtime issue. Um, and just wanted to share that perspective, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens. Oh, Ms. Anderson, no. I'm sorry, I saw one, now I see Ms. Anderson, then Ms. Owens.
Okay, thank you. I don't know how many high schools they have in Louisa County, but, but, but I bet they don't have twelve, eleven or twelve. Um, and I wonder if they have one lunch also. I visited, now I have visited four high schools. Last, last time we talked, I had visited only three. The four high schools, the students that I've talked to, all of them, all students, every one of them said, yes, phones are a distraction during instruction time. But I can live without it as long as I know I can check my texts if I need so, need to know something at lunchtime. They all said, they, all the students that I talked to, I didn't have one student who was obstinate about it or anything. Ev- every student was like, that's, that's not a problem as long as we can have it at lunch. Also, I've spoken to several parents of high school students and they all agreed that, you know, high school time, these kids are getting ready to become adults and it's our duty to um, get them ready to be responsible with their phones. When is it acceptable to use your phone, when is it not? How do you, how are you, are you going to be responsible at using your phone? They have to know this when they get out into society. Cellphones are not gonna go away. So I believe strongly that um, that during lunch, it's really necessary. And by the way, tonight, there were five high school principals here, and I spoke to each one of them, and I asked each one of them the same question. Cellphones at lunch, yes or no? Every one of them, of all five of the high school principals, said yes. So the high school principals realize that it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be easy to, to um, police this thing at lunch because of one lunch, unless we give up one lunch. And I don't think that they're gonna, they're gonna do that either. So I think, I think we need to, we need to go with what our high school principals wanted, want us to do. And I've been told that every high school principal actually has said that they, they want it at lunchtime. And, but only at lunchtime. And so, yes, I know it's gonna fall on the, on the, on the teachers and the administrators to enforce this, but I think we can do it, and I don't think we should take the phones away at lunchtime. I think that's necessary. And oh, by the way, the biggest group that I ran into at one lunch when I was at Callum High School was a group of about twenty-five kids who were sitting all, all around having their lunch, and they were all chatting. None of them were on their phones, they were all talking and collaborating with each other. And um, one, during the time I was speaking with them, only one picked their phone up, and she didn't use it. She just picked it up to sort of look to see if there was a message, and then she put it back down. They were just talking and it was, it was awesome to see. So I don't think that they're gonna abuse it. I, I do think that it's just something that we're gonna teach them as being responsible and, and the acceptable time to use their phones. So I think we need to be able to continue using the phones at lunchtime.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. During the PRC, um, there certainly-
Um there certainly were differing thoughts around how we ended out uh voting. For uh the, the policy with lunch as the exception for our high school students. Ms. Manning mentioned uh not really having the, the full support. For a shortened timeframe during the uh lunch block. And basically what was mentioned is enforcement of cellphone use during one lunch. Is going to be too much to manage and it's really not fair to have the staff members. Go into cellphone police mode during that time when they are supposed to be facilitating. Uh tutoring or clubs when students are able to walk freely to different areas. I, I really don't, I don't see it as a. To, to get into those power struggles with students. That's not what uh staff are looking for. And I did not speak with all of the principals that were here today, have spoken with some. Um but I certainly believe what Ms. Anderson is saying about the principal's opinions. Um one of the themes that I have heard repeatedly. Since my time on the board from speakers coming in is that parents don't co-parent with the school. Uh and that parents. Word, parents wishes for their children should be heard and amplified and prioritized. Every parent who spoke today. Though they had differing opinions on other topics that we were gonna discuss. They were all consistent that they felt high school students should have access to their phone. I do believe that total cellphone uh abstinence, if you will, during the school day can work in some places. I'm sure that it maybe does work in Luisa County. They have one high school in Luisa. They have one middle school in Luisa. And the population of Luisa is less than the population of our students in the district. And so we offer things that are just not available for comparison with other districts. Our academy program makes it so that if a transportation situation changes during the day. We have students who can be a forty five minute drive away from their home. Because we have, you know, expansive land in Virginia Beach and we are busing students all across the city. Uh and that's not something that any of our counterparts uh within the region. I don't even know if it's happening anywhere in the state to the level that we do it in Virginia Beach. And so. Our role, as I see it, is to. One, represent the constituents and hear and amplify their voices. And two, to make sure that we are tailoring uh. Policies specific to the needs of our community. Uh we certainly have uh families, as I was mentioning, to seek out those unintended consequences and. To make sure that you've weighed them and you feel comfortable living with what those unintended consequences may be when you make a vote. And there are certain uh families within our district who are gonna be disproportionately impacted by the lack of. Uh being able to communicate during that lunch break hour. Some families have a, a mom who's gonna be home with cookies when the, the child gets home from school and they're waiting for. Any phone call to, to rush up to the school and be available. Some parents are working and that necessary communication that might happen during lunch hour. Might be the only time that that student is going to have. Before they get home and that parent is at work and not available to them and coming home after they go to sleep. I had at least one student mention that they don't have cellphone service at their home. There's not a home phone. To, to go to the office and call. However, the parent's phone has wifi access and so if they need to shoot a message about. A change in after school activity, they can send the message because that's how cell phones are able to work on wifi. But if they go to the office and try and make a phone call, nothing is going to go through. There is no service to that phone. Um we are only cutting off access to certain families at a disproportionate rate. I, I think that the high schoolers during that lunch block helps not put the burden back on the. The staff to be cellphone police. And ultimately, if the law changes through general assembly and comes out with a requirement. That lunch can't be uh used for cell phones. Then it will have gone through the proper channels to make that determination and obviously the, the board will, you know, follow suit. But while we have the ability to tailor to our community, that's what I think should happen and that's what I'll be voting for this evening. Thank you.
I just wanna agree with what um Ms. Owens just said and what Mrs. um Anderson. I. I've had the opportunity to go visit some high schools and talk to some principals. And also, Mr. Callen and I had the opportunity to talk to students. About this policy and the regula- not the regulation, but just how we carried out the policy at the Student Advisory Committee meeting. And um they were very in favor of let's, you know, they, they knew it was really impacting. Um education and, and, and that it, there should be some kind of limits on the cell phones. They were fine with that. But in talking to them, they made a lot of sense with the, having the cellphone for the high schools. There's so much. That these high school students have to use their phones for in the curriculum. There's one group and I can't remember who it is, but they, their class is at the mall and they have to have their phone. They, they use their phone for this class. And it's like, so what are they gonna do? Um and then, so when I, and I, I visited Callum too and um. I was, you know, I've read that, that book and I'm like, you know, this is time for us to do something. I agree. But I think that we need to uh leave this opportunity, like Ms. Owens said, we've got this opportunity to tailor. This regulation to let these high school students uh use this phone during their, their lunchtime. I think it's so very important. And I did go out and, and I happened to be at Callum. Before their lunch started and when their lunch started and I walked through the comments area where they have their lunch. And with the principal and the kids had their phones, but they were all talking to each other. They were all interacting with each other because I thought I'd see this. Like you see it when you go in a restaurant and you see the whole family. Moms and dads and, and everybody. But I didn't. I saw the kids uh talking to each other, interacting. Um so it's, it's, I don't think it's keeping our kids from having that social ability that they need. And I think it's helping build responsibility as Ms. um Anderson said. So um. I, I can't vote on this um. I can't support this amendment either. Thank you.
Mr. Callen.
This is the book that is the center of so much of this conversation. If you're not aware of it, I highly recommend it just for. Exploring the topic. Uh Madam Cherry, if you will indulge me.
Mr. Callen, please don't give me heart failure about. And Amy, while I'm a little bit concerned about copyright, um please state the name and the author and attribute anything you're reading out of there because we're broadcasting. We have to be careful about copyright issues.
All right, the name of the book is The Anxious Generation and the author is Dr. Jonathan Haidt. So all I'm gonna do, for those who are still in the process of just gathering ideas, if you'll indulge me, let me le- read a little bit from this book. To give you a sense of what this researcher discovered. And the interesting thing is, this book is over three hundred and sixty pages long and eighteen percent of the contents of the book. Has to do with the research that he engaged in in order to arrive at his conclusions. So let me share some of what.
Callen, I do love you. I don't want you, if you can just keep it to one page for copyright purposes.
One page.
My age, I don't need my heart failure at this time of night. So if you, I'm just a little bit worried about copyright restrictions. So that's all I'm worried about right now. So.
Dr. Haidt and I are close friends. He just gave me the green light a long time ago. He said, go for it.
Okay, I'm gonna remind you that when we talked to.
Oh, he, he was just kidding. I just wanna make sure you know he was just kidding.
Okay, I'm not. I'm, I'm here to protect you. So if we can keep it till I one page, I'm not trying to catch you off. I'm just worried about because of broadcasting purposes and copyright issues. I want us to be careful.
Okay, this is just to set the stage and get a deeper understanding of the things that were considered. In the process of arriving at the conclusions that we're arrived at. So if I may begin, just give me the high sign when I.
Okay, well, you know, the major old day, school board attorney, don't give me heart failure. That's all I'm like.
Okay. Mountain Middle School in Durango, Colorado went phone free back in two thousand and twelve at the start of the mental health crisis. The county around the school had among the highest teen suicide rates in Colorado when Shane Voss took over as head of school. Students were suffering from rampant cyberbullying, sleep deprivation and constant social comparison. Voss implemented a cellphone ban for the entire school day. Phones had to stay in backpacks, not in pockets or hands. There were clear policies and real consequences if phones were found out of the backpack, backpack during school hours. The effects were transformative. Students no longer sat silently next to each other, scrolling while waiting for homeroom or class to start. It started to talk to each other or to the teacher. Voss says that when he walks into a school without a phone ban, it's kinda like the zombie apocalypse. And you have all these kids in the hallways not talking to you each other. It's just a very different vibe. The school's academic performance improved and after a few years it attained Colorado's highest performance rating. An eighth grader named Henry explained the effect of the phone ban. He said that for the first half hour of the school day, his phone is still in the back of his mind, but once class starts, it's just kinda out the window. And I'm not really thinking about it. So it's not a big distraction for me during school. In other words. The phone ban ameliorates three of the four foundational harms of the phone-based childhood. Attention fragmentation, social deprivation and addiction. It reduces social comparison and the pull into the virtual world. It generates communion and community. Naturally, smartphones and their apps are such powerful attention magnets that half of all the teens say they are online almost constantly. Can anyone doubt that a school full of students using or thinking about their phones almost all the time? Texting each other, scrolling through social media and playing mobile games during class and lunchtime. Is going to be a school with less learning, more drama and a weaker sense of community and belonging. Most public schools in the United States say that they ban phones. Seventy seven percent said so in a two thousand and twenty survey. But that usually just means that the school forbids phone use during class time. So students must hide their phones in their laps or behind a book in order to use them. Even if such a ban were perfectly enforced by hyper vigilant teachers patrolling each row of the classroom. It would mean that the moment class ended. Most students would pull out their phones, check their texts and feeds and ignore the students next to them. When students are allowed to keep their phones in their pockets, phone policing becomes a full-time job. And it is the last thing that teachers need added to their workload. Many of them eventually give up and tolerate open use. As one middle school teacher wrote to me, give teachers a chance, ban smartphones. A phone ban limited to class time is nearly useless. This is why schools should go phone free for the entirety of the school day. When students arrive, they put their phone into a dedicated phone locker or into a lockable phone pouch. At the end of the day, they retrieve their phones from the locker or they access a device that unlocks the pouch. Some parents object that they need to be able to reach their children immediately in case of an emergency such as a school shooting. The author goes on to say, as a parent, I understand this desire. But a school in which most students are calling or texting their parents during an emergency. Is likely to be less safe than a school in which only the adults have phones. And the students are listening to the adults and paying attention to their surroundings. There's little surprising evidence that digital technologies enhance learning in the typical classroom. The report also noted that mobile phone use was associated with reduced educational performance. And increased classroom disruption. So going phone free is a crucial first step. The value of phone free, and this is fascinating, please lean in on this one. The value of phone free and even screen free education can be seen in the choices that many tech executives make. About the schools to which they send their own children, such as the Waldorf School of the Peninsula. I didn't know anything about it, checked it out. If you send your kindergartner there, it's thirty five thousand a year. If you send your high schooler there, it's fifty seven thousand six hundred a year. But these executives send their kids to school such as this one where all. Digital devices, phones, laptops, tablets are prohibited. This is in stark contrast with many public schools that are advancing one-to-one technology programs, trying to give every child their own device. Waldorf is probably right. Additional evidence that phones may be interfering with education in the United States can be found in the two thousand and twenty-three. National Assessment of Education Progress, otherwise known as the Nation's Report Card. Which showed substantial drops in test scores during the COVID area, erasing many years of gains. Here's another lean in moment. However, bear with me ladies. However, if you look closely at the data. It becomes clear that the decline in test scores began earlier. Scores had been rising pretty consistently from the nineteen seventies until two thousand and twelve, rising. And then they reversed. COVID restrictions and remote schooling added to the decline, especially in math. But the drop between two thousand and twelve and the beginning of COVID was substantial. The reversal coincided with the moment teens traded in their basic flip phones for smartphones, leading to a big increase. In the attention fragmentation throughout the school day. It wasn't students that were in the high quarter, it was the lower quarter whose scores dropped the most between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and twenty. Again, a lean in moment. These students are disproportionately from lower income households with black and Latino students overrepresented. Studies show that lower income black and Latino children put in more screen time. And have less supervision of their electronic lives on average than children from wealthy families. Across the board, children in single parent households have more unsupervised screen time. This suggests. That smartphones are exacerbating educational inequality by both social class and race. The digital divide is no longer that poor kids and racial minorities have less access to the internet, as was feared in the early two thousands. It is now that they have less protection from it. But smart, smartphones don't just damage learning, they also damage social relationships. And on it goes. Point of the matter is deeply researched, highly concerned about the mental health of kids and making the connection. That doing it through the entirety of the school day is seen from a deep analytical perspective. As the single most important way to address this problem. If you do it during lunchtime, then you've gotta wrestle with the challenges that surround putting everything away after lunch. This just shows with research and examples based on historical experiences. What happens if you do it entirely and how beneficial it can be. Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate your time.
Ms. Franklin.
Um Dr. Robertson, the original um regulation that we have on our plates here. Um that is the administration's recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
So to allow it at lunch. Okay. Um just to Mr. Callen's um point, he referenced a middle school. How long have we been completely cellphone free in middle schools? Ki- kids have never been allowed to have their cell phones out?
Correct. Currently, our middle school process is it's in backpacks in the locker, the expectation that's been communicated there. Um I see some people shaking their heads. Obviously, we have violations.
Cor- correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's not going away with any decision that's made. I mean, let's be clear. We will just ensure our best that they are consistent in enforcement. Whatever is decided, we know there's gonna be potential for students to decide to try and test that rule. And I, I think.
Tale, tale as old as time.
Yes, and, and I think the other, if I may, the one component. When I hear the examples and that I agree with everything that's being said about the levels of distraction. One of the comments I made at the last meeting is this is a mid-year adjustment. And it does create some challenges when you do it mid-year versus when you start the year. With that, as I'm sure the other examples have done. So for example, Chesapeake, who is bell to bell, started day one. And have shared very similar comments here of what they have seen in terms of that practice. So I just don't wanna lose sight that the mid-year decision does create the challenge um around that, around that move.
So let me ask you. So let me ask you. We've worked really hard to redesign our high school model. And in doing so, it has created, I'm going to call it opportunities for cellphone use during the lunch hour, the lunch forty minutes, right? So there are apps to get help, tutoring help. There are a number of different things that the students use their cellphones for during that high school model. If we went to no, no cellphones at all, can we go back to a regular lunch schedule?
Well, let me, the question I'd give you, we can always go back to a regular lunch schedule regardless of decisions that are made. We give principals that freedom right now. I do believe several of our high schools will go back to that for the purposes you explained. And, you know, we have some high schools that are two thousand and some that are fourteen hundred. So in our conversations with high school principals, we are giving them that leeway based on whatever decision is made by the board. If it is going to be complete bell-to-bell, that they may need to return back to a three- or four-bell lunch schedule that breaks up instructional time during third block. Other principals have said, "We're going to do our best to maintain it." So we're giving them that level of flexibility, knowing on a mid-year change that making that adjustment, they may need to do that.
All right, and no exaggeration from Mrs. Anderson's comment. There really were principals here, and we really did stop individually and speak to them, and they, they were, they're okay with the lunch period. So it must serve a purpose, Dr. Robertson.
Yeah, so I think what I'll share is the, the, a little more detail on administration's recommendation. First of all, we are in support of bell-to-bell. We're not in support of bell-to-bell right now. And my analogy would be, we are moving mid-year with a substantial change at the high school level. One of the responsibilities we have as, as leaders is, and high school principals, and this is unanimous among the high school principals, is to teach kids how to adapt and develop new behaviors to regulate themselves. They are I can't find the adverb, or the adjective. They are incredibly concerned about the number of referrals and what's going to occur as these kids make these adjustments in the middle of the year. In my conversations with some of the superintendents who have implemented the process at the beginning of the year, there was a process of communication last year through the summer, and then at the beginning of the year. It's, kids are always ready to go, come in at the beginning of the year and, and have new things implemented. When you introduce something in the middle of the year, it is going to be a challenge that may likely disproportionately affect a certain group of kids.
At one hundred percent.
And one of the things that I feel like my responsibility as a superintendent is, when board makes policy, it's my job to create a regulation with my team that I believe is going to lead to a successful resolution of the implementation of that policy. And I just want the board to know that we plan on going bell-to-bell to start the next school year. This is an opportunity for us to wean the kids off a little bit more by eliminating their use during class time. And then continue to have conversations with those students to say, "Look, next year, you're, it's going to be bell-to-bell." One of the examples that Mr. Cowan used in the book, we did not purchase, we do not have the funds, we did not purchase any pouches for kids to secure their phones at the beginning of the day, because think, think about what would be required to do that. They would be required to have an area where they would all go and dump those pouches, which would, is going to cause an issue in the morning. Then they'd have to come back to that area in the afternoon, which means you would have to release them from a class early to get there. You wouldn't want to release two thousand kids to go there. What we're trying to do is create an implementation plan that will help the kids regulate and manage themselves. We heard tonight, and, and this is another important fact, we only have the kids about six and a half hours a day. That means the other seventeen and a half hours, they are not with us. And we have parents who have said tonight, they're not the only ones, and there are other parents who go, "Hey, just take them away." So we're really split. But there are parents, and I said, "Those kids need to have those phones." Well, as a child, if my parent says, "I want you to have your phone," we're going to hold that kid accountable if the policy is adjusted, and their parent is going to have issue with it. So I just need the board to understand. If the decision is to move bell-to-bell, I am going to ask that you give us consideration not to start until the second term. To give us January to get the kids prepared for moving into the second term. And even with that, I am concerned, and just, the board needs to be prepared to see and from, and hear from parents, to see spikes in referrals. Eventually, the kids will come around. They absolutely will, no doubt about it. I just believe that this implementation of a mid-year, mid-year change is going to be highly disruptive at a time where we don't need that. And with the understanding that we support the fact that cellphones are distraction. We support the fact that it should be bell-to-bell. We're just asking for consideration from a timing standpoint to wean them, as we've noted in the regulation, and to notify them next year, it's bell-to-bell. The board decides differently, the only thing I would ask is consideration, start term.
Okay, so I see nobody.
I was going to say, for what it's worth, the Council of School Attorneys were discussing this last week. I believe Fair Falls Church is the only school division that was also considering lunch for the same reasons you are looking at lunch. Prince William has said, for the same reason Dr. Robin said, they said, "It's too much mid-year. We didn't have the codes of conduct out there. We didn't, we haven't had a chance to explain this." So they're not going to start theirs until next August, and that, and I think there's one or two other school divisions. So it's not just here. I am hearing other school divisions are worried about some of these issues on there. So there's a variety of ways it's being handled through the Commonwealth.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor. Does everybody understand Ms. Weems' substitute motion? Okay, voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have four ayes and seven ayes, so the substitute motion for Ms. Weems did not pass.
Okay. So now I'll, I'll, I'll accept nominate, a motion, sorry, to, you already have. Oh, we do. Okay, voting, okay. Any further discussion about keeping it, Ms. Brown?
All right, so I, I just want some clarification, Madam Chair, from Dr. Robertson. You mentioned that once we vote, that next year, this would come up again, but you know, and I, I personally do support bell-to-bell, but big on process, and, you know, as much as I want to stay, you know, quiet about that, because it's what I prefer. I, I do believe that the intention behind voting on the regulation was that the current board wants to have discussion if that were to be changed next year. So I think it would be most appropriate if that lunchtime bell-to-bell was going to come up again, that this board have another discussion with a majority affirming that bell-to-bell.
Yes, absolutely. And I believe that the bylaw change that you guys had recently would warrant your ability to do that. And if, and as long as I'm here, my word is, our plan is, and signaling to the entire community right now, that twenty-five, twenty-six is bell-to-bell.
I appreciate that, Ms. Brown.
I, I just, you know, that's what's right, and I want the community to know that it, it's my intention that if this comes up again, to make sure that it's the board's wishes. So, thank you.
All right, so now we're back to the original motion, which leaves cellphone use only for high schoolers during the lunch period. All right, any further discussion? All right, the voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion did pass for Regulation five dash five-two point one.
So that leaves us with the request to repeal Policy three sixty-five, since it's obsolete at this time.
It's now obsolete. So I'll entertain a motion to Oh, we did, okay, sorry, had to look up. Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Manning. Any discussion? Voting board's open. Oh, Dr. Green, sorry, Dr. Green.
What is, what is it that we're going to vote on this time? I missed something.
You, you've had an existing Policy three sixty-five on cellphones. And that's where you've allowed them to use them between classes and lunchtime. That's a, we don't need that, we don't need two right now, so we, we need to vote, we just get rid of this one, because you've now adopted a new one. Correct, you're re-refilling it.
Okay. Okay, voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion to pass to remove Policy three dash six-five.
Okay, now moving on to Item D, which is the Book Content Committee. And before we start, I'd like to turn to Dr. Robertson. Oh, we did bring legislative back. Okay. Is it E, though? It's, it's, it's last.
So I thought of a way, Dr. Green, to see if I could explain this better. I'm going to try to do it backwards, see if that explains it. What, I'm not, Ms. Franklin can explain her velocity, but just procedurally, what Ms. Franklin has asked the board to consider is to look at Policy, sorry, file, sorry, Policy six sixty-five D. And she wants you to amend it, and there's one word she wants to add for elementary schools that will put elementary schools aligned to do the same procedure that secondary schools are, which would be, they would only be looking, you can't have, not to have sexually explicit books, but you're only going to be looking at incoming books, so that you're going to add the word incoming. To be able to do that under your bylaws, Bylaw one thirty-two, which is one that we amended last year, normally your procedure is to send it to PRC first. Due to an amendment you had in your bylaws in one thirty-two, you have a procedure now where a school board member could bypass PRC and bring it directly to the school board. But, so the school board generally isn't surprised about that. The intent is, if you want to bring it for the school board to consider the same day that they see it for the first time, that requires a little bit more. So you can't just, you need seven people on the school board, or a majority plus one, if you have less than eleven people at the meeting, to be able to do that the same day. Because normally procedures, you bring it one meeting, talk about it, and then come back another meeting. Since you wouldn't have that opportunity, because it showed up the same day you're being asked to vote on it, you would need seven people to vote on it the same day, at least to pass it, one she brought out. What we were asked to do is, how do we get past these seven required members? And to do that, we have to look at another Bylaw one thirty, which was to say, suspend that portion of Bylaw one thirty-two. So one thirty-two C three, where it says, "Seven members, temporarily for this particular vote, take out that requirement and make it only a majority vote." So you would only need, you only need six of you to pass it if it goes through. That's, that's a procedural hoop that you're running through. What you're actually being asked to do is in six sixty-five, look at that. So procedure, that's why we have multiple steps here. What it will come down to is, if you were to approve the suspension of Bylaw one thirty-two C three, section on seven, if that passes, then you turn around and you take up the vote on six sixty-five D, the amendment. And that would only need a majority vote, six persons to pass it. If it doesn't pass, you still look at six sixty-five D amendment, but this case, you need seven to pass it. So it's, it's a couple hoops to jump through. So that, I'm not sure if that helped any. Then I could leave it to, I guess we probably need a motion to, to consider and discuss, and then leave it to Ms. Franklin to explain.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to open up this Book Content Committee for discussion, motion made by Ms. Franklin. Yes, but, okay. I entertain a motion to approve the Book Content Committee's suspension of Bylaw.
Now, we submitted an amendment after discussing today, we have the wrong Bylaw, that would be Bylaw one thirty B, we would be moving to suspend it, so.
It's up there, one thirty B.
It looks like one thirty-two, I might have read it wrong.
It could be. One thirty-two.
According to Bylaw one thirty B, the school board votes just.
Yeah, I think it's written wrong there. You're pursuant, using Bylaw one thirty B, you're asking to suspend the requirement on one thirty-two C three for the seven-person vote. That's what the motion is. Correct, you need seven people to agree to suspend the requirement that when you vote on this, if you pass that amendment, you need seven people. It would, and if you do that, that means you just need a majority to pass. Otherwise, you need a seven person, seven members to, to pass.
Ms. Franklin.
So, Ms. Lynetti, when I, when we were discussing this, I thought that there was the requirement to provide twenty-four hours of notice to ensure, because we've already discussed this at the last meeting, and I was trying to make sure that we were doing this properly. So if we have this situation where we have provided the twenty-four hours notice.
You still, that's, you still have to give prior notice. If you don't give the prior notice in a certain amount of time period to amend it, you, you have to have a unanimous vote of eleven members, because it's, it's too much a surprise to them. And correct, when we discussed it, I got it wrong, and I wrote it wrong, and I had discussions with school board members today, went back to look at it, and I was wrong in how we did it. You do need seven, because this is the first time they're seeing it, and you're asking about them the first time, you are going to need seven people to agree, either to, to pass it, if it passed, or to suspend the other bylaw, which requires the seven members. So either way you do this, you're going to need seven people agreeing to do whatever you're asking.
Okay, well, but we can still have discussion on the Book Content Committee, even if this does not pass, correct?
Correct. If you didn't suspend that, you're still going to need seven on there.
Okay, thank you.
Put this up there, and we can vote. Any further discussion? Ms. Owens.
So for this vote on the suspension of the Bylaw, I, I would just put out there that I'm going to, going to vote no on this. I certainly will be voting yes on a change. I don't know that it matters one way or the other, because you need seven votes, and I, I don't foresee that. But maybe, maybe after our discussion, we'll be there. But since it is seven votes needed either way, I, I don't see, for me, the point of changing precedent in this situation, when we can have consistency in our process and still have the same likelihood of landing with whatever outcome. So I just wanted to explain my vote prior to making my vote.
Okay, anybody else? Voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have two ayes and nine ayes, so it did not pass.
Okay, so that then returns you to the proposed amendment under six sixty-five D. It does require seven affirmative votes to pass. At this point, I'll turn to Ms. Franklin to explain her reasoning, but procedurally, that's where you are.
Well, first of all, I, I do want to make a comment, because there was an irresponsible message that I feel like was put out there that stated that I want to maintain sexually explicit materials in our libraries. And I feel like that that was improper, so I want to just.
Hold on one second. Okay. All right, now, Ms. Franklin made the motion, and Ms. Anderson seconded it. Go ahead.
And so I do want to just make sure that we are properly discussing what is going on here so that the public can understand. I've had several LMSs reach out to me. And you even heard a parent come in today and say that she had a discussion with her elementary school LMS and was hearing from that particular LMS how overwhelmed and frustrated that they felt. And that's coming from a parent who just randomly walks into the, the library. And so I do feel like, while I do support ensuring that we are following the Virginia Code and that we don't have that kind of. and that we don't have that kind of material at the elementary school level, as leaders, we also should feel responsible for the votes that we make, and that's why I'm bringing this back. Because my particular vote, again, Ms. Owens talking about unintended consequences, did lead us down to the slippery slope of where we are today, and that is putting our LMSs in a position where some of them, now keep in mind, in an audit, it's a random sampling. Um, I don't know any audit that, unless, you know, unless they find something, where they look at every single piece of documentation, they do a random sampling. And at this point, we do have some elementary schools with smaller collections who have completed their review. I would say that that is a very good random sampling of what we have in our libraries right now. And so with that being said, at this point, the only way that I can see that we can even accomplish a June first deadline is for us to either go ahead and do what my recommendation is to, to amend policy six sixty-five D, to only have them look at incoming books, or we remove the deadline, or, we have, I really have three options, remove the deadline, or we, we change the deadline at this point. And so I really feel like that is where I wanna start the discussion tonight, is to make sure that we, as leaders, are providing opportunities for success to our library media specialists. Um, and, and I would, so one of the, um, uh, the emails we received said, you know, we ultimately hold the responsibility for our, for our votes and decisions. Then I challenge all of you, take a hundred books. You know, sign off on them, do what they have to do, go through the process that these library media specialists have to go through, the extensive spreadsheets that they've got to go through. I've sit, I've sat down with an LMS, several actually, but one in particular, I made sure that I had a couple hours set aside to go through this process with them, and I, I would challenge you all to do the same. Yes, yes, a lot of them are chapter books and not just picture books. And so I, I guess that's where I wanna start this conversation, is making sure that we are looking at this responsibly to provide a realistic, um, deadline and approach to, uh, to the vote that was made back in February.
So just for clarification, this policy did not have a timeline. This, this, there is no timeline in the policy. The policy came from a regulation, which is, with my colleague's permission, I'd like to ask Dr. Robertson to address one of the issues that Ms. Franklin brought up, which is the timeline, and how much wiggle room do we have in your regulation to help make sense of this?
Yeah, so I appreciate the, the, uh, conversation. I wanna go back to a moment ago where I shared, one of the responsibilities of the superintendent is to implement policy. And when the policy passed at the end of February, it was acknowledged by this board that it was unrealistic that we will be able to get right to getting through these books because we didn't have a process. And so we, we did some research during the spring period with Ms. Lynetti, Dr. Shubridge, and, and others from Teaching and Learning to develop a process that we then have to recognize, our LMSs don't work over the summer. So we weren't gonna, we were not gonna be able to train them by the end of the school year. So we decided to make sure that as soon as they came back, we had meaningful training provided to them so that they could complete the task by June. At that particular time, we felt like that was a reasonable timeframe. After the conversation last week, uh, Dr. Shubridge reconvened her Book Content Committee at the elementary level only, and polled the four LMSs and, and the three principals to determine whether or not they felt like we needed an extension. And these individuals felt like the process was beginning to catch hold with, across the fifty-five schools. Schools were now making progress. Some of the schools were actually close to wrapping up, other schools were just getting started. Uh, but there was a commitment of that group that we need a timeline, we have to have a deadline. Otherwise, it's gonna hang over our head forever, and we, we have to have a timeline and a deadline. Now, although that committee did not feel like it was necessary, they felt very confident they could get through all fifty-five schools by descent, by June first, they didn't feel it was necessary to offer any possibility of an extension. I'll go back to what Mr. Culpepper said the other day, it's the superintendent's responsibility to make sure that this gets implemented. So what we are proposing is, Dr. Shubridge meets monthly with her leadership team and LMSs. They, that occurs every month, and their next meeting is a week from Wednesday. And during that meeting, they will assess where the school's libraries think that they are, and they'll, then she's gonna go to Elementary School Principal League in January to reiterate the importance of giving LMSs time to go through and complete the tasks. And as schools are finishing, she's going to ask elementary school principals, and I'm sure Mr. Delaney and, and Dr. Hamlin are gonna support that, to allow their LMSs to go over and help out other schools, so that they can get there. And when we get to June, if there are any schools that are not finished, we're going to have a plan in place for them to complete their task by December of the end of the year, and that's it. They have to be done by December. Um, I, I think it's, uh, one of those adapting moves that you make based upon new evidence that's coming into you. And so that's what our proposal is, to kind of hit a relief valve for the small number of schools that may get to June and just not have it finished. But we believe it needs to be finished.
Thank you, I, I think Dr. Robertson covered a lot of what I was gonna ask him. At the last meeting, we, we made it clear, um, I thought that Dr. Robertson was gonna be bringing back an update from the Content Committee, and I thought that's what we were gonna be talking about today. And I thank you, Ms. Melnick, for pointing out that when the school board voted on this, we did not set a deadline. We left that up to the superintendent with his staff to determine, um, the best path forward, and I appreciate you, Dr. Robertson, um, working with your staff to do what's right. Um, and, um, also, when the board implements a policy, the superintendent can't just sit there and ignore it. He has to take action, and that's what he did. So thank you, Dr. Robertson.
Ms. Anderson.
I wanna make something clear to the public. There was an email put out to the public and a post put on social media stating that, um, Ms. Franklin wanted to change this policy so that she could allow sexually explicit materials in elementary school libraries to remain. That is blatantly false, and I just want the public to know that that's not what this was about. And, and, you know, I, I, I think it's wrong to put blatantly false, um, material out there that way and to accuse somebody of that, but it, that's what caused a lot of the parents to send us emails, because they read that post, and they believe that because it was put out by a school board member, and they believe our school board members. But, but that, that was wrong. I'm sorry, that should not have been done, that, that, she did not do this so that, so that sexually explicit materials could remain in our elementary schools. That is not what this is about. So I just, I wanted to clear that up, and I just feel like that's, that had to be said. And, um, if you were this person who did that, shame on you, I'm sorry, but that was wrong, and, and I will, I will stand up for that anytime. But I just, I just think, and I think if we could at least extend the deadline to December fir, December first of next year, that would give, December thirty-first of next year, that would give the elementary te, uh, teachers who are having a hard time, uh, ample time to get finished, so...
Yeah, so I just wanna be clear, um, we're not arbitrarily extending the deadline to December thirty-first. There's an expectation that LMSs are making progress. And that's why the monthly meetings that Dr. Shubridge and her team has allows them to closely monitor those schools that need assistance. And also, we, knowing that LMSs don't work over the break, so whatever the last day is in the calendar that the board approved, that's the date when it's gonna have to be done. So that might be twenty-first next year, December twenty-first.
Okay, Ms. Weems.
Yeah, I mean, I think the confusion is that we were talking about two different things. Last week, we did talk about the June, the, the, it was a heavy, you know, lift for some of our schools that were larger. Dr. Shubridge stood up here and assured us that she's got her hands wrapped around it, that she's gonna give help. And then we get this amendment that has nothing to do with a timeline at all. It has to do with actually changing the policy to the word incoming, meaning that they would not, in fact, have to preview any book that's already there, that it would be changed to be exactly like high school. So that was very confusing and concerning to the public, as it was to me. So we were talking about two different things, but this amendment completely changes things. It doesn't add a timeline, it doesn't extend a timeline. It changes elementary so that we cannot be a hundred percent sure if, if the, um, media specialists do not, um, preview and, and do their due diligence, like Dr. Shubridge is taking them through that process. So that's the confusion. We talked about one thing, we, someone, Doc, Ms. Franklin presented this that had nothing to do with what we talked about, that was actually changing a policy, so...
Mr. Culpepper.
I wanted to point out the same thing, pretty much. So the, uh, the change to the policy that's, that's presented to us is to, uh, is to only call incoming elementary school, um, uh, library materials. So intended or not, then a result of that would be that if there are sexually, uh, explicit materials in a library, they would remain. So you can understand the public's concern.
Mr. Frank, uh, Ms. Franklin, I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin.
Well, Dr. Robertson just presented that other option tonight. So at the time, I proposed this, um, and were, to put this on the agenda, it was still written that we would have to accomplish this by June first. And to me, the only way we could accomplish this by June first is by not, um, wrapping up the review on every single book and to only look at incoming books. And so with this new information, then, you know, we certainly can look at that now. But at the time, which was over a week ago, that I was drafting this, that was a June first timeline. And we have heard from leadership, we have heard that there are some, you know, libraries that have over eighteen thousand books in their collection. So it seemed like an daunting, um, unrealistic task. So I think that, again, um, putting something out there that would infer that I wanted to maintain or keep books in a library is irresponsible. You don't do that to a fellow board member, you don't do that to another person. In my per, in my opinion, we wouldn't recommend doing that to, for children to do that to each other, that's called bullying. And so quite frankly, that is why I'm so incensed about that particular comment, because it is demeaning and degrading and unnecessary. Now, on top of that, we had somebody come in tonight and also make a comment, the speaker, saying that, that he reached out to me, and I never responded, which is, again, untrue. So what I would say to the board, and I just wanna comment on this, I, that, you know, as we transitioned to a new board, that when I first came on this board, we had board members not even eating together. We've come a long way, and I wanted to say thank you to Chair Melnick this year for doing such a great job of maintaining a lot of unity, um, and not as much divisiveness as we've seen in the past. So I just wanna say that, um, you know, it, this, it's a tough job, sitting in that position. And I just wanna say thank you for that, because unfortunately, um, it does create a situation where, when we don't collaborate and, and discuss things and, and talk, um, um, and throw arrows, then I think that it gets very, um, sideways, and we miss the point. So with that being said, I would like to say that if, if that is the recommendation at this point, then I, I would be fine amending, um, my proposal and, uh, and just allowing us to allow the superintendent to accomplish it with the extension, um, being available for those, like, for those LMSs that need...
Oh, you did, oh, would you like to withdraw your, your motion? He says he can do that, so that's new today.
Please, Ms. Weems, do not get upset, because I just...
Yeah, but he, but wait, 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 everybody stop for a second. It was, it was only mentioned moments ago by Dr. Robertson that there's, there's an extension available, and if, if Mrs. Franklin made the motion, uh, she, this is her motion on the floor, w- would you like to withdraw your motion?
Based on the information that we heard tonight, yes.
Okay, so based on that information, she's withdrawing her motion, and honestly, we, there's nothing for us to vote on because that, that, that is up to the superintendent as part of his regulation, so that's, now this is dead.
Point of order, um, since Ms. Franklin made the motion, she's withdrawing, and we need an okay by Ms. Anderson, thank you.
I didn't get that far, okay, and then, so we have a motion, we have a second. And that it's withdrawn. Yes, right, I don't do anything, that's right.
Yes.
All right, everybody's good, we had a lot of head nods, I thank you for that, thank you for the discussion, everybody. Okay, um, last up for inf, for action is the Legislative Agenda. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the Legislative Agenda as presented. Motion made by, Ms...
Sorry, Madam, uh, Madam Chair, I just need a moment to get up to that point.
Okay. All right. Is this what happened? Did you see that happen? Motion made by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Culpepper? Okay. All right, any, um, any discussion? The voting, the voting board is open.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have, uh, ten ayes and one nays, so the motion did pass for the Legislative Agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, um, anything to report on committee organizations or board reports? Yes, Ms. Anderson?
Um, well, this is my last hurrah, so I wanna remind everybody, if there's anybody still listening out there, that, um, the Sister Cities Scholarship for the, um, Student Ambassador, um, the applications are due January thirty-first. If there's any students out there interested in participating in this, uh, please, please ask your counselor. It's also, I found out, on the Central Scholarship, is that what that's called, Ms. Dr. Green?
Scholarship Central.
Scholar, it's on Scholarship Central also, so look for the Sister Cities, um, Ambassador Scholarship Program. So that's, that's my big plug again, one more time. And next month, I guess there'll be somebody else, I'll have to pay somebody else to, to say this.
We'll make sure that we are saying it for you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, before we leave, um, just wishing everybody the happiest of holidays. May your, may your break be filled with love and kindness and family and laughter and, um, and light, and, and light. And so, um, love you all, happy holidays, see you in January, it's ten twenty-six, and we are adjourned.